Next, we have our Moment of Silence and I just wanted to offer for remembrance, if you would like, our Master Plumber, Ryan Riegland, who passed since the last meeting. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Acuff, seconded by Mr. Alcarro. We can do just a voice vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Nope, okay. We can also do that by voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, consent agenda is passed. Okay, next we have announcements. We will have our spotlight on education. Opal Kendall will be reading that.
Thank you, Shirley. Fifty-five years ago, a powerful idea was born. That's when President Lyndon Johnson told our nation that Hispanic heritage is our heritage. Thirty-five years ago, the celebration of Hispanic Heritage Week became Hispanic Heritage Month, enshrined in law by President Ronald Reagan. This year, the celebration, which formally begins tomorrow and continues through October fifteenth, will recognize the contributions of our Latinx community to our nation with its theme this year, Latinos Driving Prosperity, Power, and Progress in America. This theme is reflected by a proclamation from the American Presidency Project. Hispanic heritage holds an indelible place in the heart and soul of our nation. The American identity is a fabric of diverse traditions and stories woven together. Since the beginning, our country has drawn strength and insights from Hispanic writers, scientists, soldiers, doctors, entrepreneurs, academics, and leaders in labor and government. Our deepest values have been informed by the love of family and faith that is at the core of Hispanic communities. All of these contributions help us realize the promise of America for all Americans. One of the best ways to experience the value and the joy of our Hispanic community will be to join Civil Sabroso, the annual festival showcasing Latino art and cultural. It will take place this Saturday from two to nine PM in Washington Park. It is free and open to all. Over the next thirty days, schools across our division will be uniting their students and communities to create greater awareness, support, and appreciation for these contributions and their importance to our success together. With us this evening is one such leadership group, decades from, students from Albemarle High School's Latinx Club. For more than a decade, members of the club have been influential in making their school and the quality of life in our community better. They have advocated for positive change in Richmond, resulting in legislation passed by the General Assembly. They have advocated for positive change in their school, when a few years ago, the first Latina was elected to the Student Council Association. Here with us this evening is Assistant Principal Leylani Keys. She will introduce us to some special guests, who will share their thoughts on this special occasion and their work for a better future for our school division and our local, state, and national communities.
Good evening, School Board. Thank you so much for inviting us from Albemarle High School, Hispanic Heritage Month Committee, and our Latinx Club leaders for the spotlight on education this evening. You know, my name is Leylani Keys. This is Adriana Arroyo. She's a brand-new staff member at Albemarle High School. She's an English learner teacher, and she's also an official translator for, interpreter, sorry, in our school division. She's going to be interpreting what I say for the community.
Buenas tardes, la junta. Muchas gracias por invitarnos. Yo soy Leylani Keys y ella es Adriana Arroyo. Ella es certificada intérprete de nuestro condado y va a interpretar nuestra reunión. Ella también es maestra, una nueva maestra que tenemos, de enseñar inglés como una segunda idioma.
You all would agree that one of the things that makes Albemarle High School so wonderful, when you walk in the door, is our dynamic diversity. Our linguistically and culturally diverse student body has conceived of and produced numerous student-led initiatives, programs, and organizations that have benefited the entire school and surrounding community. One such organization that was created in 2014 was a club called Latinos Unidos, which is now the Latinx Club. Latinx serves the social, cultural, and linguistic needs of the Latino and Hispanic student community at Albemarle High.
Ustedes estarán de acuerdo que una de las cosas magníficas de la escuela secundaria de Albemarle es, y de su environment dinámico, es la diversidad que tenemos y compartimos todos los días. Linguísticamente y culturalmente somos un cuerpo estudiantil muy diverso que ha producido a numerosos estudiantes líderes que han hecho programas y organizaciones que han beneficiado a la escuela entero y la comunidad. Una de las organizaciones que fue creada en 2024, en 2010-24, fue un club llamado Latinos Unidos, que ahora se llama el Club Latinx. Latinx sirve como apoya socialmente, culturalmente, y lingüísticamente a los necesidades estudiantiles para la comunidad hispana y latino en la escuela secundaria de Albemarle.
Sarah Reyes, please stand, Sarah. Adriana Arroyo, standing next to me. And Spanish teacher Teresa Stecker are the dedicated teacher advisors of the Latinx Club. I want to appreciate them. By a round of applause, please. These teachers, along with our AHS Diversity Resource teacher Emily Youssef. You can stand, Emily. Other staff members from all of our academic departments and student leaders are those that make up our Hispanic Heritage Committee at Albemarle High School. In a few minutes, our Latinx Club leaders Ashley Alcantara and Oscar Gomez will tell you a little more about their organization, their motivation, and our Hispanic Heritage Month events.
Estos maestros junto con la diversidad, los recursos de diversidad, la maestra de recursos de diversidad, Emily Youssef y otros miembros de nuestro equipo de todos departamentos y los líderes estudiantiles hacen nuestro 2023 herencia hispana, el comité de la herencia hispana en la escuela secundaria de Albemarle. En pocos momentos, nuestro club de Latinx, el líder Ashley Alcantara y Oscar Gomez, les dirá un poco más de nuestra organización, su motivación, y los eventos que tenemos planeado para el mes de la herencia hispana en la escuela secundaria de Albemarle.
Our Hispanic and Latino students at Albemarle High School make up twenty percent, today I checked, twenty percent of our student body. Seventy-five percent of the four hundred sixteen Hispanic and Latino students at Albemarle High School have parents that prefer communication in Spanish. Fifty percent of our Hispanic and Latino students at AHS are also currently in our English learner program and are striving to be emergent bilingual students. So there's a great need for staff members who are Latino and bilingual to communicate with students and engage our parents. After all, we know that students who see role models and teachers who look like them and talk like them in our schools are more likely to succeed.
Nuestros estudiantes hispanos y latinos en la escuela secundaria de Albemarle hacen el veinte por ciento de nuestro cuerpo estudiantil. Setenta y cinco por ciento de los cuatrocientos dieciséis estudiantes hispanos y latinos tienen padres que prefieren comunicación en español. Cincuenta por ciento de nuestros estudiantes hispanos y latinos en la escuela secundaria de Albemarle también están en el programa de inglés como segundo idioma y están tratando de ser bilingües, estudiantes bilingües. Entonces, hay una gran necesidad para miembros de nuestro equipo, quienes son latinos y bilingües, para comunicarse con los estudiantes y los padres. Después de todo, sabemos que los estudiantes necesitan un ejemplo de seguir y maestros quienes se parecen y hablen como ellos en nuestras escuelas y tienen más chance de ser exitosos.
One strategy that we've used to increase the diversity of our staff is to create a pipeline for former students of color to rejoin us as staff members at Albemarle High. To introduce the current leaders of our Latinx Club, I'd like to first introduce you to Guillermo Guerra Serpas, who graduated in 2018 and returned to AHS in 2023 as our new ESOL student academic and family engagement specialist. He was a founding member and president of Latinos Unidos, the first Latino and Hispanic student organization at Albemarle High. I was proud to have Guillermo as my student, and I'm even prouder to have him as one of our excellent staff members, someone who has returned to his community to help uplift his community, someone who not only relates to our students, but is uniquely able to motivate them to achieve their dreams because he was in their shoes at one time.
Una estrategia que hemos realizado para incrementar la diversidad de nuestro equipo es crear un camino para estudiantes anteriores de color para reunirse a nuestro equipo en la escuela secundaria de Albemarle. Para introducir los líderes de hoy de Latinx Club, quiero introducirlos primeros a Guillermo Guerra Serpas, quien se graduó en 2018 y regresó a la escuela secundaria de Albemarle en 2023. Como nuestro nuevo, hizo enlace de familias y apoyo estudiantiles. Él fue uno de los miembros que estableció y fue presidente de Latinos Unidos, el primer Latino y grupo, organización estudiantil hispano en la escuela secundaria de Albemarle. Estoy orgullosa de tener Guillermo como mi estudiante y estoy más orgullosa de tenerlo como un excelente miembro de nuestro equipo. Alguien que ha regresado a su comunidad para levantar su comunidad. Alguien que no tan solo se relaciona con nuestros estudiantes, pero que también únicamente pueda motivarlos para lograr sus sueños porque él alguna vez estuvo en sus zapatos.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, members of the board. I'm José Guerra Serpas, currently the Albemarle High School EL Family Engagement and Student Support Liaison, where I've been able to create a self-welcome space, not just for my EL students, but for every AHS student. The commitment I've been given, I have been taking it personal. Not just too long ago, I was just sitting in those classrooms with those teachers. I graduated from Albemarle High School in 2018, knowing my classmates, and I left a legacy for future generations of young and strong students looking for a piece of home in unknown place for many of us.
Buenas noches a todos. Yo me llamo José Guerra Serpas. Hoy en día soy el enlace de familias de ISO y apoyo estudiantil donde he estado para crear un ambiente seguro, no tan solo para mis estudiantes de ISO, pero también a cada estudiante de Albemarle. Este compromiso se ha... Este compromiso se ha convertido en algo personal para mí. No hace mucho tiempo, yo estuve uno de esos estudiantes, yo fui uno de esos estudiantes sentado en esas aulas. Me gradué de la escuela secundaria de Albemarle en 2018, sabiendo que mis compañeros y yo dejamos un legado para los futuros generaciones de juventud y estudiantes fuertes buscando un pedazo de casa en un espacio muy desconocido para muchos de nosotros.
As a young student, like many of us, I took many wrong choices and many more mistakes. Regardless of those downs I faced as a young Latino, one of the best decisions I ever made was to be part of the Latinos Unidos, now known as Latinx, in Albemarle High School. Latinos Unidos started with only six students. Now we have more than fifty-five students currently enrolled with the club. We just wanted to bring our community together and to educate our fellow classmates about our culture and our traditions. I was able to become the president of the Latinos Unidos on the mentorship of Ms. Sara Reyes. Just like her, I had many teachers and mentors I could rely on, people that could guide me to become a better student, a better person, and now a better man. After graduation, I joined the United States Marine Corps, reaching the rank of a sergeant. After my enlistment, I found myself becoming a role model that I once needed as a student.
Como un estudiante joven y como muchos de nosotros, tuve muchos errores y cometí muchos errores. Sin embargo, de esos bajos que yo confronté como un joven latino, una de los mejores decisiones que hice fue ser parte de Latinos Unidos, que es ahora Latinx en Albemarle High School, en la escuela secundaria de Albemarle. Latinos Unidos empezó solamente con seis estudiantes y ahora tenemos más de cincuenta y cinco estudiantes inscritos con el club. Solamente queremos unir a nuestra comunidad, educar a nuestros compañeros sobre la cultura y tradiciones. Me convertí en el presidente de Latinos Unidos debajo de la supervisora, la señora Sara Reyes. Igual como ella, tuve muchas maestras y maestros y mentores con quien podía confiar o podía contar. Personas que me guió a ser un mejor estudiante, una mejor persona, y ahora un mejor hombre. Después de graduarme, me fui al cuerpo de los marines de los Estados Unidos y alcancé ser sargente. Y me encontré siendo un ejemplo de seguir que yo una vez necesité como estudiante.
Now, please let me introduce you to one of our students, Ashley Alcantara, current senior president of the Latinx, a three-point-five GPA college-bound student.
Ahora déjenme introducirles a Ashley Alcantara. Tiene un promedio de tres punto cinco y está para irse a la universidad.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Ashley Alcantara Valerio. Soy hija de padres latinos. Y aunque nací aquí, fui criada en México. Regresé a Estados Unidos cuando tenía quince años con el propósito de terminar mis estudios y aprender una segunda lengua.
My name is Ashley Alcantara Valerio. I am the daughter of parents who are Latinos. And even though I was born here, I was raised in Mexico. I came back to the US when I was fifteen years old with the one purpose, to finish my studies and learn a second language.
Llegar a un nuevo país fue todo un reto. Conocer personas con diferentes culturas y aprender un nuevo idioma me daba mucho temor. Sin embargo, y gracias al apoyo de mi familia, compañeros, y maestros, fui superando los obstáculos que mis miedos me imponían.
Coming to a new country was its challenge in itself. Getting to know people with different cultures and learning a new language gave me a lot to be afraid about. But, and thanks for all the support in my family, thanks to all the support in my family, my classmates and teachers, I was able to overcome those obstacles and my fears that were imposed on me.
Hoy en día, soy el presidente electo de Latinx, un club inspirado en personas con raíces latinas que buscan superarse. En este club, buscamos crear un ambiente seguro y confiable, en el cual los estudiantes puedan compartir sus opiniones.
Today, I'm the president of Latinx Club, a club that was inspired by people with backgrounds that are Latin or Latinos that are looking to overcome these things. In this club, we look to create an environment that is safe and trustworthy, in which the students can share their opinions.
Durante el pasado año escolar y lo que ha transcurrido el presente, hemos considerado como parte importante de nuestra agenda el establecimiento de sociedades con organizaciones que hacen vida en Charlottesville.
During this past school year, we have, and up until now, we have considered our, I'm, sorry. During the school year, up until now, we have made it a big importance in our agenda to establish ourselves with social organizations in Charlottesville.
Creciendo juntos y plumas fueron nuestros antitrones en una visita al campus de la Universidad de Virginia. Allí, tuvimos la oportunidad de conocer aparte de los estudiantes de la comunidad hispana que la compone. Ellos se dieron el tiempo de informarnos de todos los recursos y oportunidades que la universidad nos ofrece a los estudiantes de ascendencia latina.
Creciendo juntos y plumas were our guides when we went to visit the campus of University of Virginia. There, we had the opportunity to get to know a part of the community, the Hispanic community. And they gave us the time to inform us about all of the resources and opportunities that universities offer to students of Latin ancestry.
También formamos parte de una mesa de trabajo para tratar temas de equidad y diversidad entre estudiantes dentro de Albemarle High School, donde junto a otras organizaciones estudiantiles, autoridades administrativas del colegio, y representantes de la Oficina Central del Sistema escolar del Condado de Albemarle, tuvimos la oportunidad de compartir puntos de vista y aprender las diferentes opiniones que generan temas que no nos son comunes.
Also, we were able to have a work table where we were talking about topics of equality and diversity between students of Albemarle High School, where along with other student organizations, administrators of the school, and office representatives of the central education system of Albemarle County, we had the opportunity to share points of views and learn different opinions that that generate topics that are not very common.
Por último, cabe mencionar que nos dimos a la tarea de organizar una serie de actividades sociales como bailes, comidas, y juegos, con el objetivo de fortalecer el sentido de pertenencia dentro de la comunidad estudiantil entre nuestros participantes.
Lastly, I must mention that we have given ourselves the homework to organize a series of social activities like dances, food, and games with the objective to belong to a student community where we can be participants.
Como muchos saben, estamos por iniciar las celebraciones del mes de la herencia hispana. Y en nuestra escuela tenemos planificado una serie de actividades. Nos encantaría que ustedes se involucraran en ellas con su participación.
As many of you know, we are about to initiate the celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month. And in our school, we have planned a series of activities, and we would love if you all would invite, we would like to invite yourselves to participate in them.
Ahora, quiero accederle la palabra a mi compañero de estudios y amigo, Óscar Gómez. Muchas gracias.
Now, I want to pass the word to my classmate and my classmate and friend, Óscar Gómez. Thank you very much.
Gracias, Ashley. Buenas tardes, mesa principal y público en general. Mi nombre es Óscar David Gómez y pertenezco al alumnado de Albemarle High School. Desde hace dos años, soy parte de los estudiantes que reciben servicios del departamento de ISOL de esta escuela.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Oscar David Gómez, and I belong to the students of Albemarle High School. From two years ago, ever since two years ago, I have been a part of the students that receive services of the Department of ESOL at this school.
El programa de ISOL ha sido un recurso que ha reforzado mi autoestima y me ha ayudado en el camino de ajuste al sistema educativo.
The ISOL program has been a resource that has reinforced my self-esteem and has helped me on the way of adjusting myself to the education system.
Cuando llegué a este país, como les pasa mucho de los jóvenes que hemos emigrado, mi meta era solamente trabajar. Nunca estuvo en mis planes el estudio.
When I came to this country, as it happens to many others, my goal was just to work. I never thought, I never had plans to study.
Comencé la escuela sin entornos, sin amigos, y me repetía constantemente. Esto será muy difícil para mí, por la barrera que el idioma representa. Existían muchos factores que me hacían dudar, pero al escuchar mis profesores y todos sus consejos, decidí que la mejor de las metas era interesarme en mis estudios.
I started school alone, without friends, and I always repeated myself, repeated to myself, this is going to be very hard because of the language barrier. But there's many factors that would make me doubt. But listening to my teachers and all of their advice, I decided that the best thing to do, the best goal to have was to study.
El hecho de que mis profesores hablaran en mi mismo idioma fue determinante para que entendiera y se me facilitara el proceso y comprensión curricular.
The fact that my teachers spoke in the same language as me was a determinant so that I could understand and it would facilitate my process of comprehension in the curriculum.
Hoy en día, puedo decir con orgullo que gracias a Dios y todo el apoyo que he tenido en mis hermanos y la comunidad educativa de Albemarle High School, soy considerado uno de los mejores estudiantes del departamento de ISOL y de la escuela, ya que poseo un GPA de tres punto nueve treinta y tres.
Today, I can say proudly and thanks to God and all of the support that I've had from my siblings and my education community at Albemarle High School, I am considered one of the best students in the Department of ESOL and of the school since I have a GPA of three point nine three three.
Mi consejo para muchos de los muchachos que llegan a este país es que dejen el miedo atrás, que crean en ustedes mismos y que persistan en el estudio, que mejoren día a día.
My advice for many of the youth that comes to this country is to let go of the fear, leave it behind, believe in yourselves, and continue in your studies and get better every day.
Quiero aprovechar la oportunidad que ustedes me están ofreciendo para invitarlos en nombre de todo el grupo Latinx de Albemarle High School a que participen en las actividades programadas durante todo el periodo de celebración del mes de la herencia hispana, pero en particular a las del día trece de octubre y que denominamos como Latino Mentorship College Day.
I want to take the opportunity that you guys have offered me to invite you in the name of our group of Latinx at Albemarle High School to participate in all the activities that we have planned during the month and period of celebration for Hispanic Heritage Month. But in particular, I want to invite you on September thirteenth, on October thirteenth, in particular, to come to Latino Mentorship College Day.
Con esta invitación, queremos brindarles un espacio donde se permitan no solo conocer, sino también interactuar con la comunidad estudiantil latina de Albemarle High School, la cual ya alcanza un número aproximado de cuatrocientos veinte estudiantes. Estudiantes que hemos aceptado y hemos comprometido con el resto, con el reto de capacitarnos y dar lo mejor de nosotros mismos en cada una de las áreas donde nos desempeñamos.
With this invitation, we want to offer a space that will allow, not only, that will allow you not only to get to know, but also to interact with our studious community, our education community at Albemarle High School, which has reached approximately four hundred and twenty students. Students that we have accepted, students have accepted and have committed ourselves to challenge, to the challenge to work on and give the best of ourselves in every area every day.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And please, please send along the information about those activities so that we can attend them. Does anyone have any questions or comments from the board?
I mean, I'll just say, I mean, I was trying to keep from crying, you guys, like Leylani and Dara. That was amazing. The work you guys are doing, the dedication of the two students and staff, it is so inspirational for me personally and for everyone here. So such a huge thank you. I just see the joy in the students, and I'm so excited to visit, as well as just to see it continue to expand because it is really what is going to change and continue to grow the great culture. because it is really what is going to change and continue to grow the great culture.
Thank you so much, Ms. Berlin. We appreciate that. And the one thing that I didn't say that I do need to say is that without the work and the support of Principal Bonham, we would never have these opportunities for students and for programming the way we do. So I just want to thank him. Thank Mr. Bonham for the work that he's done and how open he has been. Also, he's learning Spanish.
Una cosa que no pude mencionar pero que sí quiero mencionar es esto no puede ser posible sin el apoyo que nos ha dado el director Bonham, que también está aprendiendo español, pero le queremos dar muchas gracias. This is the interpreter talking. I also wanted to interpret what Ms. Berlin said earlier. Esta es la intérprete hablando, solo voy a traducir lo que ha dicho la señora Berlin anteriormente. Anteriormente ella dijo, okay. Yo solamente les quiero decir muchas gracias por sus palabras y que he tratado de no llorar. Me han inspirado mucho los dos estudiantes que han venido a hablar el día de hoy. Y para resumir, muchas gracias.
I have a question for Ashley and Oscar. Have they decided or have you decided which colleges you're going to be going to or what you'll be doing in the future?
Tengo una pregunta para Ashley y Óscar. ¿Han decidido a qué universidad o a cuáles universidades van a ir?
A mí me gustaría estar en este ciudad y entrar a UVA y me gustaría introducirme más en lo que es la medicina. Ahora mismo estoy tomando clases de K-Tech y me gustaría estar, entrar ahí.
I would like to stay in this city and go to UVA. I am in classes of K-Tech and I would love to study medicine.
De igual manera, de igual manera también quisiera poder asistir a UVA y quisiera especializarme en lo que es ingeniería electrónica. Ingeniería y electricidad.
I similarly would also like to go to UVA and study and be an electrical engineer.
Calendar, thank you very much. Earlier you mentioned that some of the students had done advocacy in Richmond. What were the issues that that was around?
They were focused on, we used to take all of our students and we are, we took again last year, students to Latino Lobby Day at the Capitol. And one thing that they worked on almost immediately was getting licenses, driver's licenses, for undocumented people. That year that they went, 2014, I believe, we didn't win that. We didn't win that, but several years later, we did win that. And so this gives an opportunity for many in our community to be license, driver's licensed, which makes our road safer and people feel more legitimate.
Esta es la intérprete hablando, solo voy a interpretar la pregunta de Ms. Lee. This is the interpreter talking, I'm just going to interpret Ms. Lee's question. Anteriormente habló acerca de los estudiantes que han ido a a advocar, a hacer protestaciones. ¿Nos puede hablar un poco de eso? Luego Ms. Keyes contestó, sí. En 2014, en 2014 fuimos a Richmond a advocar por personas indocumentadas a poder tener el derecho de manejar. No ganamos la primera vez, pero la segunda vez sí ganamos. Y eso hace que nuestras carreras ahora sean más seguras y es algo bueno.
Thank you very much.
I would just like to say thank you for your invitation to come on the 13th of October to College Day. I will be there. I just put it in my calendar. Thank you for that invitation.
Les quiero dejar saber, muchas gracias por invitarme en 13 de octubre al día de universidad. Lo he puesto en mi calendario, entonces yo estaré ahí. Gracias.
I know we're running a little bit long, but just one more question, Leilani. I know that one of the things that we as a school division are working on is community outreach and I wonder what role this club has in promoting that.
Mi pregunta es, quiero saber cómo este club se comunica con la comunidad, si me puede hablar un poco de eso?
We've worked so much with our families and with our community. In fact, I think one of the direct results of having more Latino and bilingual staff at the school is those connections, those strong connections that we've got to gain with our families and the community. For instance, we have Latino family forums in Spanish at Albemarle High School. We have a Latinx mentorship program and one of the students mentioned this, but I just want to just mention Frank Valdez. Frank Valdez is one of our community partners, stand up Frank, from "Creciendo juntos". So just to continue, Frank has been really instrumental in helping us to create a Latinx mentorship program at school and bring that together with some of our staff members. And we have 40 members of our Latinx mentorship program who are going to continue this year and who you'll see at College Day. So we're excited to see you then.
Le quiero introducir a Frank Valdez, que es uno de nuestros compañeros de la comunidad y trabaja con "Creciendo juntos". Tenemos 40 estudiantes que van a estar en el día de universidad en nuestra escuela también.
Thank you so much for coming. This has been really wonderful. Thank you.
Muchísimas gracias por venir. Esto ha sido fantástico. Gracias.
Are there other announcements?
Yes, I have a announcement. I'm going to try to keep this short because we have a lot of people here and a lot of important things to discuss. I wanted to take this opportunity to make my intentions clear to the community in terms of what will be happening with my position on the school board. I intend to resign from my position on the school board. This is not my goodbye speech and it's just an announcement so that people will know what to expect and can engage in the process of selecting my replacement. There are so many important things on the agenda in the coming school year. We have to continue and finish with collective bargaining. We have to focus on reading recovery, including, which we'll be discussing this afternoon, selecting a new reading curriculum and ensuring it's implemented with fidelity and the resources needed to tackle our pandemic learning loss. We need to continue to support the work of our groundbreaking anti-racism policy to protect the learning environment of all of our students and make sure that they feel welcome. Personally, I believe we need to begin an audit of our instructional coaching model. We need to make sure that we continue to engage in good self-governance through our evaluation process, which is my baby. We need to continue with diversity recruitment so that more of our students experience a mentor or a teacher who reflects their identity. We need to figure out Center Two and K-Tech. And we need to make sure we can get our students to school with buses. So, there is so much to do and it's important that it is done well. I recently won the Democratic primary for the House of Delegates and I'm gearing up to hopefully serve in that role. I would love for you guys to visit me in January if you're going to do another day in Richmond. Becoming an effective leader in that position, which is different than school board, also needs my full attention to be done well. And I think acknowledging my time constraints is the best step for our organization, for my colleagues and for our community. So that wasn't that short, but, so I'm going to wrap it up. But due to my pending resignation, we are going to need to make an appointment to my position. That's pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 24.2, that's a lawyer me coming out, 22.6. So I would, I want to take advantage of all the people in the room here today and I want to encourage you all to look to your friends, your neighbors and yourself perhaps, and encourage people to apply for that role. It is a wonderful opportunity to give to your community and to affect change by being an advocate for public education. It has been a joy and an honor to serve so far. And although my resignation feels very tough personally, I am so optimistic because I've witnessed the passion and energy that new board members bring to this role and infuse into our leadership. And I know that will be a benefit to all of you and our students. And two, it means, since I'm stepping down, that someone else will be able to do this very meaningful work and serve. And the more people that we have invested in public education, whether it's here at this table or it's in Richmond, the better for all of us. So please be on the lookout for the application process. I hope we get tons of applicants and thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative Coulson. There'll be more information forthcoming about filling that role. So next we'll move to public comment. Rebecca Berlin will be doing our comment tonight.
Thank you. We invite and actively seek the public's input in matters relevant to school board governance and provide time in our business meeting to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. Disruptive behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance will not be allowed. Anyone who willfully disrupts the meeting in a manner that prevents or interferes with orderly conduct of the meeting may be ejected by the chair. Individuals and/or organizations wishing to speak during public comment must sign in with the clerk. Sign-in is available beginning 9:00 a.m. on the Monday of the meeting week until 2:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Public testimony guidelines are as follows. Speakers should adhere to the following protocol. State name and address or voting district. Address comments to the school board as a whole. Limit comments to those matters that are relevant to the school board governance or school division operations. Give written statements and other supporting material to the clerk. If you are unable to complete the presentation in the time allocated, a copy of supporting materials will be provided to school board members. Three minutes will be allowed for each presenter to speak. However, the chair may reduce the time allocated for all individuals to speak to two minutes, depending on the number of individuals who sign up. Given that tonight there are more than 10 individuals, there are actually 20, signed up for public comment, each speaker will be allocated two minutes to speak. A color-coded light card system is used to time presentations. The yellow light card means the speaker has one minute, is one minute into the presentation and the red light card means the speaker is at the end of the presentation and much wrapped up. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing or other audible form of support or non-support be used. If members of the public wish to show their support for a speaker, they may stand or raise their hands. When multiple comments on the same topic have been presented, the chair may request additional comments on the topic be limited to those who have new information to present. Debate and dialogue with the school board are not allowed. Use of the projection system is reserved for the staff schedules. Since we have 20 speakers, I'm going to call people three at a time. So if you can line up, when we get through those three, I'll call the next three. So Paul McArthur, Bellamy Brown and Andrew West. Yes.
Hello, my name's Paul McArthur. I live in the Scottsville District. I'm also the author of a petition asking the board to not renew the contract of Dr. Haas that ends in 2025. I have been a party personally to Dr. Haas's leadership. I've been on both the Cale Name Change Committee plus the committee addressing the fifth graders at Mountain View Elementary. I'm an independent voter, not a member of a party, not supporting a candidate. This is a completely non-political petition. The petition was built as a way for parents to express their displeasure with the current leadership at the central office. The focus of the petition was the nuts and bolts of running ACPS, such as allocation of resources, such as buildings, staff, buses, communication with stakeholders, proper education of all students and problem solving that we expect of a leader. This is not only about the buses. This is a small sample size of people that saw the petition and were willing to input their information into change.org to be a public signer. So there, even with that, after removing out-of-area signers, there's still over 1,000 people who signed. We learned three things that were surprises to us. The concerns are shared across the political spectrum. We heard the words "fear of retaliation and retribution" way too much when it came to asking people if they'd be interested in signing when they agreed. People are scared to make a change of leadership for better results because they're afraid that we're going to lose the progress on the social aspect and that's just not true. So our call to action to the board is with understanding that this is an 18-month process to hire a new superintendent, we ask the board to immediately start the process to get a true understanding of the environment and satisfaction with Dr. Haas to determine if change is needed. This needs to include focus groups and surveys of all stakeholders that ensures the fear and the threat of retaliation is removed. If that research matches the results that we found, then we ask the school board to make a change. Our kids, teachers, staff, bus drivers and the community deserve better than what ACPS is delivering at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Please no clapping in the audience.
Hi, my name's Bellamy Brown, 101 Old Forest Circle, Charlottesville, Virginia. I'm here and speaking in support of the Albemarle Education Association. And to be clear, more so directed to the elected officials of the Democratic Party. As part of the charter and bylaws of the Democratic Party of the United States, states clearly that we acknowledge that a political party that wishes to lead must lead, must listen to those that it would lead. A party which asks for the people's trust must prove that it trusts the people. We pledge ourselves to be open, honest endeavor in the conduct of public affairs in a manner worthy of a society of a free people. Article 9, Section 17 of the Charter states, and this is the Democratic Party credo, that we believe it is responsibility of government to help achieve a fair society, a society where all workers are guaranteed without question the legal right to join unions of their own choosing and to bargain collectively for decent wages and conditions of employment. A society where we recognize that the strengthening of the family and the protection of children are essential to the health of our nation. In reading the Albemarle County Democrats, what we believe, quality education, we believe that public education is the cornerstone of American society. Providing public education of equally high quality in every community is essential. Under workers' rights, we believe that everyone who works should earn, at least earn a living wage. We support the rights of workers to unionize without interference from employers and to bargain collectively. We believe that all workers are entitled to a safe and non-hostile work environment. I encourage you, based on that, that you support the Albemarle Education Association, that you support our public school employees and that we stop with the union busting tactics.
Thank you. Again, please no clapping. Andrew West.
Members of the school board, good afternoon. My name is Andrew West. I'm a teacher in Albemarle County Public Schools and a resident here in Charlottesville City Schools, I mean Charlottesville City. I came here today to express my frustration and distress regarding the state of collective bargaining negotiations and EVAC. I have sat in meetings and committees and convocations proclaiming how much support we educators enjoy and deserve. So I do not understand how it is that we educators and our supporters are at such opposite ends of this collective bargaining conversation. We're asking for a say in the terms of our employment. That's it. We're not asking to dictate anything or even any part of your jobs. That's a privilege you enjoy. You get to dictate the terms of our employment with no input from any of us. Would you be willing to sign contracts with a group of educators with similar electoral support cited on with zero input? Doubtful. Do you really believe that the professionals that you hired don't know enough to have a say in their own livelihoods? What is it about Charlottesville City School employees that are more deserving of a voice than us? To boast of 70 whole concessions that you have made is more than tone deaf. Every single thing we do at our job is a concession to all of you every day because we do not have a say or a voice in our job. I would also like to express my frustration regarding EVAC. As a member of EVAC last year, I watched as a room of dedicated employees tried to make any headway on any issue. In EVAC, we are assured it was not a replacement for collective bargaining, that my presence would not be used to argue against collective bargaining, which of course it could never be. Why? Because EVAC is only willing to discuss items that affect every department of ACPS. So individual concerns of teachers or bus drivers or LTIs who deserve a seat at the table will never be addressed because it is out of EVAC's scope. No changes that affect the budget can happen because that would be too hard. What real change then will we see? What real change then will we see? What change did we see? Literally the least possible. How groundbreaking and progressive. You made EVAC to find out why teachers are bailing on this county and you hired Bell to figure out why we can't close our achievement gaps. They told you to listen. Please listen to us.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Catherine Lochner, Mary McIntyre, and Vernon Leckty. Please come up to the podium.
Hi, I'm Catherine Lochner. I live in Rio Magisterial District. I was planning on three minutes, so I'm going to try and crunch it down and I hope I make it. Termination of lease of the Piedmont Regional Education Program. I read in the Almaral Minutes you recently voted to terminate the prep lease in 2025. This program serves us and six counties and the city of Charlottesville. It has a joint Board of Control. One of you sit on it plus one alternate. I tried to find any minutes from a long-range planning committee on both the prep website and ours, and I did not find any. So what do you imagine as the future use of the Ivy Creek Building? I hope that we can use it to alleviate the overcrowding at Greer and Jack Jewett. I'm so sorry, I don't remember the name. I've been out of the county for a while, so help me with that or forgive me. Additionally, I hope the board and the six other board members can mutually relocate the prep program to continue to serve the students the most highest of the needs and they have the lowest incidence. I would also like you to review the Policy JM Restraint and Seclusion. Specifically, review the requirement to notify parents in writing the description and date each time the restraint and seclusion has been deployed on a student. Policy JHG Reporting of Child Abuse. Mirroring the Code of Virginia subsection 63.2-1509 at SEC. Are we providing annual professional development and training on the proper complaint parameters? What meets the definition of abuse? I ask you to review this section containing the words "act in bad faith with malicious purpose." I'm sorry, I do have two others, but I will submit them in writing. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Mary McIntyre and the Vice President of the AEA and a resident of the Rio District and a teacher at Journey Middle School. Tonight I'm reading a statement written by a bus driver who would like to remain anonymous. Greeting board's members. First, I want to say how sad it is that I feel the need to express my thoughts anonymously because I worry about putting a target on my back. Several of us feel that that is what would happen if we say anything negative about transportation leadership. Second, everyone thinks the bus driver shortage is all about money. It is not. Everyone wants more and we wouldn't turn it away, but that is not why it's happening. Look at the Gallup poll results. We get no recognition or appreciation for anything we do. I feel invisible a lot of the time. Leadership is not available or they are condescending if you can get in touch with them. A few more things. We used to have guaranteed hours and we don't anymore. For example, if a special needs route doesn't have two of their students, that may cut off half an hour to an hour of that route. The guaranteed hours meant we wouldn't be penalized for having absent students or a shorter route, but now we are told they will take our personal leave hours to make up that difference. We want our 12-month payback. We were told it was illegal, but other departments are doing it. Another thing taken from us was the ability to park our buses at home. This was a big perk for drivers. When the news found out at the beginning of the year that we had lost four more drivers, our director was quoted saying, "We aren't trying to get rid of drivers." The question I have is, what are you doing to keep us? We were told at convocation that this year's theme is relationships. Was that taken into account when drivers with strong, long-term relationships with students and their families were taken off of their routes and placed elsewhere? Are relationships being thought about when we are being talked down to? And finally, is the board thinking about their relationship with us when they do not support our union and make it impossible to draft a fair resolution for collective bargaining? A respectful relationship would include a seat at the table for everyone, not just board members. Knowing we will have a voice in what our job responsibilities are is yet another way to obtain and keep drivers. Thank you very much.
My name is Vernon Leckty and I'm the President of the Almaral Education Association. During our August Bargaining Resolution Meeting, we told the school board representatives that there were items in the draft resolution that were so antithetical to collective bargaining that we would be forced to halt negotiations if they were not removed. Here are the provisions we find unacceptable. One, the school board could alter contracts at any time they declare an emergency or change a school board policy. This gives the board power to change any negotiated provision at any time. This is not collective bargaining. Second, to allow bargaining at the school board, to allow bargaining, the school board is requiring an election participation threshold of 66% of employees. This threshold is higher than any in Virginia. A voting threshold is antithetical to the norms of American democracy. Third, the draft contained a provision that would invalidate most of our signed authorization cards, stealing the voices of more than 1,000 employees. This measure invalidating nearly all authorization cards is also unprecedented in Virginia. At our meeting last week, school board representatives informed us that the school board remained unanimous in keeping these heinous items in the draft resolution. We were not given any indication that tabling them once again and returning them at the end of the process would yield a different result. We refuse to lend our name to a draft resolution that is on its way to becoming the worst for workers in the state. The provisions we named must be removed from the school board's draft resolution if negotiations on the rest of the draft resolution are to resume. The community wants ACPS staff to be treated fairly. We ask the school board to listen to your workforce and your community and remove those provisions from your draft resolution so talks can continue to make a fair and effective collective bargaining resolution.
Thank you. The next three speakers, Liz Conig, Jason Kason, and Susan Carter. Please come up to the podium.
I'm Liz Conig, Secretary of AEA and preschool teacher at Agner Hert in Woodbrook. The anti-democratic resolution you paid for makes a mockery of true collective bargaining. Despite your statements in the spring, we can plainly see you're not really committed to allowing collective bargaining. The burning question is, why not? Collective bargaining hasn't always been legal here for public sector workers. It was banned in Virginia by racist white leaders after the heroic efforts of black nurses at UVA Hospital de-unionized. The barriers you are putting up to getting this done puts you firmly on the side of the anti-worker racist voices of the past. If it doesn't bother you to be upholding decades of discrimination, why not? I spend a lot of time talking to fellow staff, custodians who just want to be able to take time off work without having to show paper proof from the doctor to their supervisor, nutrition workers doing the jobs of several people because positions continue to go unfilled with no extra compensation, TAs and EDEP staff who don't get paid nearly what they're worth to students. Collective bargaining is a vehicle for solving these problems. If you don't want to root for solving these morale-eroding problems, why not? One thing making people really mad is the refusal to accept our cards. Other school boards in Virginia have extended the date of the cards, no problem. This constant insinuation that people didn't know what they were signing or somehow tricked into signing them is patronizing and insulting. Employees easily read between the lines. You don't trust them. Why not? We are due answers and you cannot continue to hide behind protocol and confidentiality. The public deserves to know exactly your reasons for invalidating cards and forcing undemocratic elections. Have a public conversation about the details of the resolutions, yours and ours, so employees can understand your reasons for what you insist upon behind closed doors. So we can hear why we don't deserve at least the same protections and treatment as our colleagues in Charlottesville. We stand together. And if you won't stand with us, why not?
Thank you very much. I just want to remind the audience that no clapping, booing, or other audible form of support or non-support be used.
Ms. Berlin, my name was called wrong, but my sister, I would like you all to ask, let her speak first, let me go next, please. Would that be agreeable, gentlemen?
Christine? What is the...
I'd like to, you spoke my name wrong to begin with, but anyway, my sister, I'd like her to go first because it might have a little bearing on what I say next.
Is that, I don't...
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes.
I'm not...
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm Susan Carter, a 30-year transportation employee. October 13th of 2022, I stood here describing difficulties experienced when needing to take one hour and 15 minutes off from work to care for our son that has pancreatic cancer. January 19th, 2023, despite receiving news that test results indicated I had ovarian cancer, I attended a mandatory lead driver meeting. Instead of asking me why I wasn't engaged or didn't go to the correct breakout group, I was chastised more than once afterwards. It was brought up again by William Shiflett at my year-end evaluation. During seven months of treatment, surgery, chemo, hormones, not one supervisor or manager in transportation has contacted me to wish me well, to check on me, nothing, no surprise. I contacted transportation earlier this month regarding returning to work, asking about a morning run. Despite making multiple attempts, all documented with emails, to arrange a return as a morning driver, I was not able to make progress, no surprise. The retaliation that Kelly Washington described is very real. Why do you think drivers quit and don't speak up? When you do, as I have, as others have, you become a target. From a condescending male manager asking me repeatedly if I understood what he was saying and telling me repeatedly that I was too direct, audio is available of this, to being chastised repeatedly for being mentally absent the day I received a cancer diagnosis, to having positive input from others being omitted from my evaluation, the list is endless. It's no secret. Transportation is a baneful work environment. The above is why we must have collective bargaining. We must be protected, be treated with dignity and respect. We must have recourse when retaliated against and treated unfairly. Collective bargaining is just that, working collectively except nothing else.
I'm a fully retired, honestly discharged Marine. It was great to hear that Hispanic man up here, good thing in this community. Tell you what, I'm a baseball coach from way back, too. Grew up in busing. We weren't welcome in the white schools. Hey, hello? What are you saying? Can you hear me? Hello? Put on your listening ears, they say in school, ma'am. I'm going to say some words, compassion.
Sir, are you Mr. Kason?
Yeah, y'all pronounced my name wrong, announced I'm in Branchlands area.
Okay, just wanted to be clear for the record. Thank you.
Yep, that's the record. Gentlemen, ladies, compassion, diligence. I was asked to speak at the last moment. Essential. Wheel in the cog. Hello, bus drivers. What are we, showing our kids? You know what I did? I went out in Western Almaral, poking around with some friends I know, some coaches I know, some families I know. Some of them were working-class folks, some of them got a little more money. They found out some stuff. That one there was told as a supervisor a few years back, she didn't quite understand how to deal with difficult kids and kids from diverse backgrounds. She happened to go to all-black school because we weren't welcome in white schools and segregation in Virginia. So put on your listening ears, hello, and pay attention. You guys got a bigger problem, you know, but you solve it real quick. The compassion that Ms. Berlin explained and the peers that were sincere from her heart, somebody tonight, and I commend you, Ms. Carlson, what you're doing moving to the state level, put your head on that little pillow. Think about those kids up in White Hall District. Generations-old families that are struggling to figure out how to get those kids to school. Is it? And I'm going to leave, but that young lady spoke it, said it. Isn't a class in Florida doing the Almaral County intentionally? I know some of the kids in the other school, old trail, all of them are walking over there. Y'all have a good one. There's a thing called in the country for you country boys snooping and pooping, but it also goes on in the military, too. A lot of snooping and passing along this information on my family member alone that dedicated 30-plus years to own a small, successful business. And what y'all done to that individual family, I'm...
The next three speakers, Ariana Zlotnik, Cassandra Baber, and Jennifer Turner. Please come up to the podium.
My name is Ari Zlotnik and I'm a school counselor at Red Hill Elementary. I am speaking tonight to encourage you to make changes to the collective bargaining resolution that would allow negotiations with the AEA to resume. Specifically, I'd like you to honor our authorization cards, remove the 66% election threshold, and remove language that would allow you to change our bargained contracts at will. There's a difference between saying you're negotiating in good faith and acting in good faith. What you call good faith on your part, we call disingenuous. I want to be clear that I support the AEA's decision to suspend negotiations and I believe they were acting in good faith on behalf of the employees they represent. I do not have the same belief in the school board right now. Instead of pushing a misleading narrative that the AEA acted unreasonably, I urge you to turn your pledge of good faith into action by making the changes we are asking for. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Cassandra Baber. I'm a teacher at Monticello and I live in the Ryvanna District. I'm here tonight to share some lessons I've learned this fall in my 17th year in the classroom. One of the first things I learned upon returning for New Teacher Week or for Preservice Week is how to prevent, how to barricade my door and have my students form a human chain across the floor to prevent a shooter from entering my classroom. I also learned how to break my classroom window with a stapler and clear the frame of broken glass so that we could escape should we have a violent critical incident. This is a training we all receive that is sadly necessary, given our profession and the time and place in which we live. I accept this reality and so do my fellow educators. We also accepted for many years the fact that we had no voice in the day-to-day, year-to-year decisions affecting our students, our teaching, and our quality of life. Then the prospect of collective bargaining offered us hope in the face of some of the most difficult teaching years we've ever experienced. We do this job because we believe deeply in the work. We want to partner with you and add our insights, expertise, and feedback in order to improve education in this county for our students and our own children. The AEA does not merely represent a small handful of malcontents who complain about things that most people don't care about. It represents the vast majority of staff in this county, many of whom are too tired, too stressed about money, too intimidated, and too fearful of retribution to speak out. If membership is lower than you think it should be to indicate general agreement with the things that are said, many people cannot afford the $25 per paycheck that's extracted from our income, paychecks that now are in different amounts every two weeks and make it very difficult to confirm whether they're accurate or not. My colleagues and I signed authorization cards eagerly, excitedly, and with full recognition of the significance of this choice, not because we didn't understand what we were signing, not because we were forced or coerced.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Jen Turner and I'm a parent of a seven and 10-year-old who attend Murray Elementary and Almaral County Public Schools in the Samuel Miller District. This is my 17th year as an educator for ACPS. I started as a sped TA and stayed in this role for 10 years as I worked and also took classes. I'm fortunate to have four amazing administrators at Monticello High School, but that isn't enough. I'm glad and appreciative that I have the experience as an instructional assistant at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. I've spent the last 12 years at the high school level and the last seven years as a collaborative special ed teacher, starting with two years at Western and beginning my fifth year in the same capacity at Monticello. I earned my micro-credential in culturally responsive teaching and also earned my full certification in CRT. When did I have time to do this while having a full schedule, coaching the school, and for my children, and raising two elementary-school-aged sons? I did not have the time and I felt overwhelmed and burned out. I forget, I also jumped in to cover classes for a few years during my planning for the entire school year, and I also worked with students and families during that time that COVID shut down buildings. Remember, the physical school buildings were closed, but educators, bus drivers, cafeteria staff, building services, LTI, special service providers, and others in ACPS were working hard... harder than ever, including giving up privacy and boundaries to reach all families. Colleagues looked out for me because those are the top of the food chain, and ACPS did not. I worked all but two and a half weeks this summer, including two weeks of summer school, and then enrolling and taking professional development that I elected to do to better myself and my practice. ACPS School Board, how do you think employees feel? Do you think we feel seen, respected, and affirmed? We are professionals, and we deserve and demand to be treated with respect and have a seat at the table. This is why so many people are jumping ship to Charlottesville City Public Schools where collective bargaining is a thing and the compensation and work conditions are better, or they're leaving teaching profession altogether. I end with words by Will Winston Churchill. Success is not final, failure is not fatal, it is the courage to continue that counts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next three, Amy Gertner, Adam Florence, and Tim Kolbichar.
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Haas. My name is Amy Gertner. I'm a resident of the White Hall District and a teacher at Bratuswood. I'm speaking out in support of AEA and collective bargaining. Our intrustworthiness continues to be questioned by members of this board. During pre-service week, we spent a day practicing active shooter drills. This training was to empower us, but I know we were expected to be prepared to lay down our lives for our students. I will be the last to leave the classroom, and I practiced this during our drills. In two of the three scenarios, I was shot, yet I am not worthy to have a voice in my contract. I'm not the smartest and most educated person in the room, but I'm willing to speak publicly and give voice to our humanity. For one more year, I'm going to present myself as one of the many faithful and dedicated educators that continue to show up each day and give our very best to our school community. I've taught the children of people I graduated high school with 40 years ago. I have taught the children my former students. I've taught three members of our staff and the husband of another staff member. Relationships matter. This year, the daughter of my primary care doctor is in my classroom. I was so excited to meet her at open house. I got down to her eye level and said, "Your mom is my doctor and takes such good care of me. I'm so glad I get to be your teacher and take care of you." Relationships matter. I know who you are, I'm so glad you are here, and I'm so grateful to be able to spend time working with you. All of my 22 families showed up for open house to meet me. Yet my card is stale, and you don't trust me. I am not worthy of having a voice in my contract. I will never question the integrity of Vernon Lecty. Vernon was my son's Latin I, Latin II, and World History teacher. I had a parent-teacher relationship with Vernon before he ever became a leader of the AEA. Relationships matter. I know him, I'm so glad he's here, and I'm grateful to be able to spend time working with him. I plan on retiring at the end of this school year, but I'm not quietly quitting. I will continue to advocate for a better future for ACPS educators. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Tim Kolbichar, and I'm an English teacher at Monticello High School and a member of the Collective Bargaining Resolution Committee. Like Vernon, I was in the room, so I'd like to offer a rebuttal of sorts to the misleading statement that was released by the Division this week. One myth that was promoted by the statement is that our suspension of talks was a surprise. Fact, we told ACPS representatives one month earlier of our intentions. At our meeting on August 9th, we told Division reps that if they did not alter two specific items by our next meeting, we would be forced to pause negotiations. At our September 7th meeting, the reps told us that the school board had unanimously decided to not change any language. We then did what we promised to do. Myth, there was nothing that prompted us specific to leave the table. Fact, we were reacting to two conditions that are literally the worst in the state in their category, elections. They are, number one, the nullification of more than 1,000 of our signed authorization cards due to a 12-month expiration date. The AEA got nearly 70% of licensed staff to sign authorization cards in early 2022, well more than the required 50. The Division wants to disregard the will of those employees who signed a card saying they want collective bargaining, with one ACPS rep saying that they, quote, "didn't trust the cards." What does this say about the Division's regard for its employees that it thinks our signatures don't represent our actual intentions? Number two, unless at least 66% of the employees in a bargaining unit turn out in the first election, the election will not be certified. The school board is trying to hold us to an electoral standard that it couldn't meet itself in its wildest dreams. It flies in the face of basic American democratic principles and common sense. In a scenario with 100 eligible voters, the union could win the votes cast 65 to 0, and we lose the election because 35 people didn't vote. Again, the Division doesn't trust us to know our own best interests. Our actions should tell you more about the egregiousness of these conditions than it does about us. It's fitting that one Division committee member said we, quote, "took our ball and went home like they were talking to children," because these conditions also-
Good evening. I'm Adam Florence, proud bus driver. I love my job. Matt, he's driving my old bus right now, the Bruiser, like I call it. Rosalyn, I drove her daughter when I drove for Brownsville. I read an email the other day, and I was surprised, 66%. The only thing I can say is, did you get 66% of your vote? Did you get 66% of your vote? Did you get 66% of your vote? So why should we? It's that simple. It's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next three speakers, Michelle DeFano, excuse me if I mispronounce anyone's name, I forgot my glasses today, Michelle Stefano, Kate Selmer, and Catherine Thomas.
Hi, my name is Michelle DeStefano, Beaver Dam Road in Keswick, and I'm also a write-in candidate for the Rivanna District School Board position. This is in regards to the bus transportation issue. Virginia Code states that schools are only required to provide transportation to disabled and special education students. This is the minimum acceptable standard that you have been hiding behind throughout the whole transportation crisis. I'm guessing that before schools started, you probably didn't even view this as a potential crisis because you were meeting the standard. Why are we, as a county, content with the minimum acceptable standard on transportation? County residents, myself included, were shocked to learn that transportation is not a requirement for the general student population. It is in my birth state of New Jersey. I think there is consensus in the community to make transportation for the general student population the required standard here in Alamo. Doing so would prioritize transportation above some other projects that you handle so capably, such as school renaming and solar energy production. You'll then be able to handle this issue just as capably in the slot those presently occupy in the priority list. The goal being that the next time a transportation standard is met here in the county, it will cause no crisis. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before I begin, we are having a massive case of stage fright. With permission, may I read my daughter's words?
Yes.
Thank you. "High school board members, my name is Kate Selmer from the White Hall District. My teachers matter. It's that simple. Why are you not working in good trust to make collective bargaining happen? Actions have consequences. If I ignored all my family, I would get grounded. If you ignore your employees, what do you think will happen? All the good teachers will leave. Is that what you want? My teachers matter. All employees matter. Do better for them. Thank you."
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Thomas. I am the grandmother of fourth grader at Baker Butler. And I am so disappointed that I have to be the bus driver every morning coming. We live in Camelot subdivision, so we already know that 29 is awful. The traffic is ridiculous. It's backed up to Green County. I spend two hours a day dropping off and picking up my child, grandchild from school. And most of that time is waiting in line. It's a shame. And we didn't really even get the two weeks that they said that we were given to know that we would have to figure out how the child's get to school. You know, everything has gone up gas. I'd spend $50 more a week now just to take the child to school and pick him up. You know, yes, the parents could do it, but they work. So I would rather they go to work and I not have to support them. But, I mean, this is ridiculous. I want to know, when will we get a bus for Camelot subdivision? We deserve it. I pay my taxes, and I am so tired of paying $5 for, five cents for a bag when I buy my groceries, but I can't get a school bus to take my child to school. So you all gotta do better, because it's a shame on you, because it's a shame you all knew this problem over a year ago. And this is what we wind up, you tell the parents, "You figure it out." Well, we figured it out, that you all, at some point, we have to vote for you. So remember that. We remember. It's like old dogs don't forget neutral, don't forget. And I did not forget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last two speakers are Sally Hudson and Heidi Gilman-Bennett.
Good evening. My name is Sally Hudson. I serve Alamo County in the Virginia House of Delegates, and I'm here tonight to say I'm sorry. I am sorry that the General Assembly put you in the position that brought so many people here tonight. In 2020, when the House and Senate passed legislation that finally lifted Virginia's ban on local public-sector collective bargaining, we pushed all of the responsibility of defining a fair bargaining process onto local governments. And that wasn't fair to you. In the House, we understood the need for clear guidance to local governments, and so we passed a detailed bill that defined all of the critical components of a fair bargaining process, the bargaining units, certification, elections, and more. But the Senate gutted that bill and gave you one skinny page that pushed all of that work onto you. I want to thank you for engaging in that work, but I also want to acknowledge all of the limitations that so many people have already raised tonight, and to make very clear that the draft ordinance that you've currently presented would be illegal under the standards that were passed by the House in 2020. That's the direction Virginia is going. It's the direction that we deserve to go in, and so I hope we can work together with our local legislative delegation now to look ahead and pass an ordinance that is not just fair to our local educators now, but will stand the test of time. Because I think the General Assembly you're going to see elected this fall is going to be a much stronger partner to local workers, and so we should look ahead and see that process and do what we can now to deliver a more durable resolution for the long haul. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Heidi Gilman-Bennett. I am a parent of two kids in Samuel Miller District. I'm here tonight to talk about both reading and our teachers, because our teachers' working conditions are our students' learning conditions. Higher teacher morale means higher student outcomes. They're related. So the information you're going to see tonight about the reading SOL scores is really tragic, and it's heartbreaking, and I do believe personally that collective bargaining will make a difference for our kids. I want to focus, last Friday, we had about 50 movers and shakers in the community gathered to talk about reading as a civil right. So on the SOL scores, I want to focus for just a second on the third-grade scores, which, as you know, are a key milestone. The scores reported for the third graders last year are for children who spent an entire first-grade year trying to learn phonics and decoding skills from home. I have such gratitude for their teachers. However, about a third of the kids in third grade are below state average, and more than two-thirds of Black third graders and those who are economically disadvantaged are failing to learn to read. I'm worried about what's happening with our kids, and I'm worried about what the leadership is doing this year. I want to know more about what is happening by the leadership with the Bellwether Audit. The results are a clear indication that the being a reader has failed. I really wish you had listened to teachers previously when they explained so strongly that what was happening in the classroom, the tools they were provided with weren't working. I'm pleased to see the reading adoption on the agenda for tonight. I do want to point out that there's zero opportunities for family input, but I am pleased to see that the voices of teachers and reading specialists have made a high priority. Alamo County kids and teachers can't wait. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone for your public comment tonight.
Yes, thank you very much for all the public comment. Next, we have school board superintendent business. Is there a superintendent business?
As a lot of employers are leaving, I just want to take this opportunity to thank everyone for a good start to the school year. I did get out to visit Woodbrook, Murray, Croze, Stony Point, and Center One this week, and a lot of very positive things going on for kids through the efforts of our employees, bus drivers, cafeteria staff, administrators, lots of positive experiences. I do want all of our employees to know I appreciate them letting me stop by for a walkabout. I'll be out at Baker Butler tomorrow, and I want to thank everyone, and I hope everyone's heading into a nice weekend after tomorrow. And I'm going to turn things over to Rosalyn, she does have an update on transportation.
Good evening. I'm Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer, and I'd like to provide a brief update on transportation. Last time I was before you and before the school year started, we had nearly 1,000 students on an open route. As you will see on this week-by-week report, we have been able to reduce this each week. This has been through a combination of starting new drivers, route reconfigurations, utilizing part-time and temporary drivers. This week, which is the last column, we had 275 students on a fully open route, another 165 students who are only being served in the morning. This means we are serving 95% of students who requested transportation. Obviously, we are not where we need to be, but we are moving in the right direction. We have 11 drivers currently in training, so we are optimistic the numbers will continue to improve over this month and next. And lastly, we are starting to have actual ridership figures now, so the department is looking for consolidation opportunities. As I said last time, we know how impactful this is to our school community and are committed to solving it. And we'll be back at the next business meeting in October with another update and hopefully improved numbers.
May I, a quick question, Rosalyn. Of the 11, which is four more than you had a couple weeks ago, when are they going to be finished training? I mean, are we talking November, are we talking January? I know it'll vary, but-
Yep, so I'm going to give some various, we have some that'll be done as early as two weeks, others could take as long as end of October or beyond. They're all coming in at different points with different CDL experience and some with none at all. Eleven more drivers will be great.
Are the parents notified of maybe how much longer it might be before their students would be affected by?
We have not shared specifics. We are training them as fast as possible, but it's not a guarantee, so we don't want to give them a date and not be able to fill them. We notify them as soon as we have a firm date, so they know what to expect.
Sorry.
No, I have the last.
Statistically, where are we in terms of that 10% that we were talking about where we see the numbers drop? I know these are the hard numbers, but like, do we anticipate they're dropping more? You know, we were talking about every year, you know, people sign up and then it drops.
Yeah, so we know there's a big gap between the number that are registered and then those that are actual riders. So we are gathering attendance. We had 300 families notified today that they haven't been riding 10 days or more and have moved from the route. 10 days or more and have moved from the route. What we're finding, though, and we're going to tighten up that data, is it's just inconsistent ridership. It's not like they're not riding at all, but they're riding here and there. And so we're going to start having some conversations with families of ones that are riding one every 10 days, just understanding their need. But we're also utilizing the ridership data, just average daily ridership. Even if it varies who the kids are, we'll have firmer numbers on. On average, this route only has 50 and will allow consolidation opportunities.
So do you have a sense of when that consolidation and route reconfiguration might happen?
That's going to take a couple of weeks. That's a lot of analysis and a lot of moving parts. Our priority right now is to get these new drivers on routes as quickly as possible.
Have you done any troubleshooting with parents? Or, you know, can you just talk about what it's?
Yeah, so we, at the Directional Board last week, made sure that we made contact with all, attempted to make contact with all families who did not have a ride. Schools have done amazing work with the resources they can have. We have some schools that are using the van to pick up kids on a daily basis. They've offered early drop-off, facilitated cart pulls. We know we're not meeting all the needs, but we've done what we can with the resources we have.
I hope it continues in this direction.
Thanks very much, Ms. Schmidt. Any other School Board or Superintendent Business? Okay, next we have School Division Business. We have Building Services Updates, Summer 2023 Project Updates, Lindsay Snotty.
Good evening. I'm Lindsay Snotty, Director of Building Services Department. And I first wanted to thank the board for taking a moment of silence and dedicating that to Ryan Ragland with our department. So we'll be going through a lot of project updates that happened over the summer and some in the past winter tonight. But I wanted to first highlight the strategic plan alignment that all of these projects have. We're first going to talk about some staff that we hired in our project management team who do fulfill that attracting and developing the highest quality staff. We're going to talk about developing sustainable and modern facilities and also infrastructure and equipment and how we try to distribute these resources equitably across the schools. And we've done a lot of work on a video to highlight some of these projects because it is hard to get to all these schools. So we're going to run through this and give you guys a view into what you might have missed. About a year ago, A C P S hired project managers to design and manage all school capital projects. This summer, our A C P S team was excited to implement projects that have been designed and pursued over the past year. This video highlights a summer of successful projects with the A C P S project team.
Hi, my name is Kagan Squire. I'm a project manager for Building Services for Albemarle County Public Schools.
I'm James Allen. I'm one of the project managers for Albemarle County Public Schools.
My name is Gerald Harris. I joined Albemarle County Public School System in August of 2022 as a senior project manager. Prior to that, I had been working in Colorado for a number of years for general contractors as a project manager, where I used to work to the interest of the contractor. Now I work to the interest of the owner and help manage the contractor to assure that the requirements of the documents are provided, compliance is maintained, work is finished on time, and we finish it in budget.
My experience coming into a new role, it's been great. You know, I've had a lot to learn just about, you know, some of the operational things internally that happened that already existed here, but as well as trying to figure out, you know, efficient ways to operate in this new role. But everyone has been extremely welcoming. It's a very team-oriented approach to a lot of things.
I came to the project management team from the actual, from the electrical department on our maintenance staff. I was their electrical foreman. And, you know, just wanting to get, you know, advancement with the opportunities that the Building Services provides. I got offered this position and I felt like it'd be something I'd really want to do. I like being challenged. I like learning new things. So that's, you know, it's really been fun for me.
I'm Senior Project Manager for the Mountain View Elementary School Edition and Site Work Renovations. The scope of the project involves replacement of air conditioning in the existing classrooms, the addition of a cafeteria, significant changes to site work, and all new playground equipment. The site work primarily involved redirection of the parent drop-off and pickup of the students to reduce or remove the impact of the backup of traffic on A V O. We've provided four drive lanes down on the south part of the building and student drop-off and pickup areas in that location. The cafeteria addition maintains a connection to the corridor of the main school. Playground equipment, the kids are excited about it. So I guess we did something right in that area. It contains areas for lunch, outdoor classroom, as well as for climbing, swings, basketball, and a blacktop area where they can draw games and pictures on it. We have a playfield out adjacent the playground areas. We've been working on Mountain View since last year and will continue on the cafeteria addition through December of this year. But in addition to managing the construction on Mountain View, I've also worked on some summer renovation jobs, as we call them. The Albemarle High School project, we abandoned four grouped toilets, which had common interest to multiple toilet spaces. The new plan included single-use toilets off of the hallway with the sanitary facilities, that is handwashing, sinks along the corridor wall. This provided more security for the students.
We're here at Western Alma High School on the locker removal corridor renovation that was funded by the High School Renovation Fund. It entails the removal of 200 linear feet of lockers that were no longer being used by students and placing a solid surface style bench, tabletops, and countertops in their locations. It's given them a place where they can sit out and get together and do other activities outside of the classroom. And also, we added some, updated the paint and everything to make it a much brighter space. These are our solid surface benches. They chose this colored top here to give it contrast rather than have everything just be white to give some contrast and kind of match what was already existing in the school. These are the tops that you're actually able to sit up underneath of and, you know, have a laptop here rather than having to sit off to the side. All of the countertop spaces have power added to them so that students can place any kind of electronic equipment they need, laptops, whatever. Because of the length of some of them, there's actually half-inch tubing, steel tubing that runs the length of it and down the legs to give it reinforcement. So when they sit on it, it doesn't buckle in. Some of the challenges with this project has, because of the reinforcing in the benches and tabletops, we had to use some steel. That's one of the things that has long lead times because we're still feeling the effects of the shortages.
So here at Community Lab, if you just see behind me, that's an air handler. What we're doing is we're replacing two former split systems and, you know, providing updated equipment, which will be much more efficient than the dated equipment that was installed here. We're also placing it in an area that is more accessible for our crews, so it's much easier for them to provide maintenance and upkeep of the systems as well. It used to be up in the ceiling, actually, which, you know, provided some challenges to access it because we'd have to remove ceiling tiles, things like that. Now it's in a closet where they can walk in. It's easier to change filters, things like that, which then requires, since it's in a different location, rerouting some of the ductwork. And the goal was to just reuse as much of the previous ductwork as possible, which helps us expedite our schedule. So outside, there's a large concrete pad that we just put in. And so what we're going to put out there is a larger air handler unit, and that will service the gym for us. Previously, it was up in the ceiling. And so where it was before, it actually used to be a stage. And so it was all open ceiling and the air handler unit in there was way up there. And so it caused some issues with, one, getting up there. Two, it was kind of a safety issue with having to have a platform up there and having Building Services crews get up there. So we relocated it down on the ground here, which then required us to reroute some of the ductwork. Obviously, construction in general, there's always several challenges and moving parts that you have to accommodate for. But specifically in the school system, we only have about, you know, eight to 10 weeks to get all our work done. So we try to cram everything in. And so that also needs to include work that, you know, our custodial crews need to account for and get done as far as waxing floors, cleaning areas that they aren't able to get to since the building's, you know, being used heavily by students and staff during the school year, as well as just, you know, updating, painting, and things like that that just happens, you know, normal wear and tear items. So it's coordinating, you know, a whole plethora of things in a very short amount of time. This is my first year here, so I think now that I've done a few projects, seeing all the students come back and see how they appreciate all the work that we've done is very satisfying. And, you know, just to feel the gratitude from the students and the staff.
I have always moved to schoolwork as my preferred choice because it provides such opportunity to provide structures that really have a purpose and aid in the ability to educate our children to become the future of tomorrow.
The A C P S project team will continue to support the strategic plan with particular focus on developing sustainable and modern facilities, infrastructure and equipment, and distributing all resources in an equitable manner to transform learning experiences and opportunities.
All right. Love that video. We had some great help from Patrick Huddleston to take us through that. And just, we really appreciate his expertise. And now I'm going to introduce Matt Wortman, our Deputy Director at Building Services, and he's going to take us through some more project work.
Thanks, Lindsay. Good evening, Dr. Haas and members of the board. As Lindsay said, I'm Matt Wortman, the Deputy Director of Building Services. As you know, our work is funded out of the county's capital budget and is not part of A C P S's operational budget. This slide shows, let me see if I can make this full screen. This slide shows just the other nearly two dozen projects that our team completed this past summer. Just a few highlights, I'm not going to go through the whole list. But this summer's work included nearly 170,000 square feet of new roof on four schools, a major H V A C overhaul at Burley Middle School, several systems upgrades, and of course, our annual flooring and painting and casework replacement projects. With one exception, all of these projects were delivered on time. And equally important, our entire maintenance program finished on budget. And we did all of that without having to cancel any of this year's planned projects. This has not been an easy task because, as you heard in the video from Jamie, we are still feeling the ripple effects of the pandemic in terms of what it had on the supply chain for several key materials. In summary, our team installed over $12.7 million worth of work this past summer. If you think about that, over a 10-week period, that's more than $1.2 million worth of work going in every week. We recognize that this is a significant amount of taxpayer funding, and we do not take that burden lightly. You can see here the breakdown in spending by feeder pattern. While not exact, it is very nearly equal between the three feeder patterns. And 29% of these expenditures went into Title I schools. We take our mission of providing sustainable and equitable facilities seriously and are committed to doing our part to ensure every student's success. None of this, however, could have been possible without our incredible team. You saw in the video three of our project managers that we hired a year ago. And I want to introduce to you the rest of our team. Our newest project manager, April Newton, on the left, just started with us in August. As you may recall, under the current fiscal year budget, we were able to secure a fourth project manager to help with our workload. And so we're really excited to have April on our team. Caitlin Wetzel is our Management Analyst. She helps keep our budgets in line. Lisa Walker is our Senior Project Planner. Sheila Hoopman is our Senior Facilities Engagement Manager. And Mars Eagleson is a project administrator on our team. I want to say one quick thing about Mars. Mars started with us when she, or when they were an intern at Albemarle High School, and they have worked with us every summer through college and are now working for us as a project administrator. They do incredible work, and we are so grateful to have them on our team. You heard in the video about the internal growth opportunities that having an in-house project management team has created within Building Services and why each member of our team values the critical work that they perform. But I want to expand a little bit on why A C P S having its own project management team has made a large impact on our capital program. This slide shows the annual C I P maintenance expenditures for the last six fiscal years. The blue chart is the original dollar figures, and the gray bars show those expenditures adjusted for inflation. The orange line shows the percentage of C I P maintenance budget, of the C I P maintenance budget that was spent. As you can see from this data, with the exception of fiscal year 19, which was an outlier, the amount of C I P maintenance expenditures had been on a declining trend prior to this past fiscal year. What's worse is that when we look at the annual budgets also adjusted for inflation, they had been on an increasing trend. This shows that the efficiencies of our C I P maintenance program had been declining. However, as you can see in the graph, we reversed that trend this past year, and having our own project management team has enabled us to fully utilize the resources that the Board of Supervisors appropriate to the School Division. The benefits of an in-house project management team, however, extend well beyond the financial impact. We have observed more efficient communications with principals, been able to enhance our community engagement efforts with students, teachers, and the broader community, optimized our design collaboration processes with maintenance staff, and have had a more smooth integration with the operational teams in Building Services. And perhaps most importantly, we are better aligned with A C P S's core mission. These improvements have been observed by others as well. When asked about his experiences in working with our new team, Steve Saunders, the principal at Greer Elementary School, stated, "We've found that the A C P S project management team was exceptionally organized and responsive to not only the scale of the project, but also the day-to-day details that emerged. In addition, we received increased communication and onsite support that made the project better and run more smoothly." Now Lindsay's going to talk to you more about operational improvements that we've made over the last year.
So one of our big initiatives over the past year was first finding a new program for our work order system, our scheduling tools, our scheduling system that we use for community usage internally, and also our inventory management system. And we've integrated F M X. We are fully implemented now and we're working with the system throughout the division. We like it because it has enhanced tools for better communication with key stakeholders and our community users for facility rentals. And it also has an asset management tool that's new to us and is helping us not automate how we work under our capital maintenance plan, but definitely help when we're getting to the end of the age of different systems to have that captured within this tool. So we have a more efficient way to build those budgets each year. It also has enhanced reporting and K P I tracking capabilities. I wanted to make sure the board knew about our new Assistant Director for Custodial Services, Tiffany Morris. She survived her first summer with us, and she did a great job. That included waxing over 1.2 million square feet of floors. And she has done an excellent job training staff, retaining staff, and just really listening to staff as well. We've been very happy to have her on board. Gym floor refinishing happened at multiple schools you see listed there. On the maintenance side, we also had a busy summer, as we always do, both doing our regular work orders and assisting contractors, which is always part of the work that we have to do to get those projects. do to get those projects across the finish line. On our maintenance team, I wanted to highlight for the board that we do have three K-Tech students that are currently working with us. And we've had one of them for more than a year, and we're hoping to retain them as they graduate and keep them on board with us. But it's been exciting to have some youngsters, as we call them, on board with our skilled trades. Over the fiscal year '23, we completed over 11,000 work orders, and then just over the summer, over 1,400 work orders completed. So it's a busy, busy summer. We also implemented, as you probably saw at several schools, our conservation mowing program that was initiated through our advisory committee for environmental sustainability. After we did some explaining and some education, I feel like we're having good results from the program. You'll see a picture there of Scottsville and kind of what you tend to see at the, at these campuses where we're doing conservation mowing, where we're definitely maintaining the edges of the places, but we're in areas where we don't have students accessing fields often, like the fronts of areas like Scottsville and Walton. We've reduced the mowing but kept that clean edge for, for the environmental benefits and for safety benefits for our staff as well when it comes to steep slopes. You'll also see a breakdown of the slide of the different types of work orders by trade. So definitely balanced, and we need every crew member that we have. All right, with that, I will open up to questions. I know you've had a long meeting so far, much more to come, but we appreciate your time and the ability to show you these projects. Thank you.
I didn't know if it's a question for Lindsay. Before we brought the project managers in-house, how did this work?
So prior to this past fiscal year, some of the work was, was handled in-house. Annual flooring and painting, for example, was handled in-house with, with Building Services staff. The larger capital projects had been outsourced to local government employees. We, we worked in tandem with them, but one of the, as I mentioned, one of the, the major benefits to having our own, our own team has been that increased communication. Even just the, you know, their, their team is located here in the county office building. They do great work. They do fantastic work for, for local government. And I think they would say too, that, that because of this change, that they've been able to provide a higher level of service for, for the local government teams that they serve. So I think it's really been a mutually beneficial step.
I have a question about the security film over the windows. Has that been completed now at all of our schools?
We are. We just finished up the last two this past week, so we are, and when I say complete, that we focused on strategic windows, so it's not every window around the school. It's all entrances, any side lights around entrances, and then glass that we deem to be in a more of a risky location or someplace where it was a higher risk for entry. So that's been completed at all schools.
Okay, thanks.
You know me, I have a thing about trailers. I saw that the trailers were removed from Brownsville. Do we repurpose those or sell them, or they, by the time we get rid of them, we do something else?
So it depends on the location. At Brownsville, it was a lease for that, for that ones. We do own some, all the eight classroom pods that went in over the pandemic, we own all those pods, so that's the high schools and Henley. So we own those units, but the single units and the older ones are typically, either we own them and they've been around for a really long time, or the newer ones are in decent condition, they're in a leased situation.
I was just going to make a small comment, that I'm always interested in hearing about students who are A, Albemarle students who come back. And so you guys talked about Meg, you talked about three potential K-Tech students, and then Ms. Keys talked about Jose. So I just think that's such a great thing for us to continue doing, because people always talk initially about teachers, but I think computer staff, building services, custodians, however, we can continue to like, keep students in our community going forward. It's just great.
Mr. Bullia, I think that's his name, he made the initial introduction to Mars, and it's been, they've been wonderful. And it's, it's great to see the skill development over the years and continue to utilize that.
I don't have any question, but I just, from the video, I just, every year when we see that, I'm reminded, and I know I should be thinking about this all the time, but I'm just reminded about how every single person who works for the division is part of our students' achievement. I mean, truly, I mean, like bathrooms, you know, the places for people to sit at, was all those things. So I just, I really appreciate your work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for support and their time.
Yet again, Lindsay, you and your team and Matt, you know, have just done terrific work over the summer and throughout the year. I love walking around the schools in the summertime and just watching it all happen. And it's just so impressive every single year. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're planning for next summer, so we'll keep.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Thanks, Matt.
Next we have 9.2 Human Resources Hiring Update. Dan Redding.
Give me a moment to try to get through the technology here. Well, good evening, school board members, cabinet members, and Albemarle community. My name's Dan Redding. I'm with Human Resources. This evening, we bring you the annual Human Resources Hiring Report, and we're very excited to share this data with you. Ah, come on. As always, our work is grounded in the strategic plan, beginning with the vision. We seek educators and support staff who will support our students as they become contributors and leaders in our dynamic and diverse society. The people we hire every year become an important part of the team that will add to the predictive value of race, class, gender, and special capacities. Hiring a diverse and representative teaching force is important for all students as they learn to navigate a world of diverse people and perspectives. We seek hires who exemplify, who exemplify our values, and we support them in helping students experience and embody these values during their time in our schools. And of course, goal three, objective one, attracting, developing, and retaining the highest quality staff, is at the heart of what you're going to hear this evening. And tonight, we'll present to you data that demonstrates progress over the past year on this school. It's important to consider the national, state, and regional climate that we're working in right now. As the labor market remains historically tight, and teacher and bus driver shortages impact school divisions all over the country in very, very significant ways. Despite those environmental challenges, ACPS continues to lead the region and the state with our hires, and there's plenty of good news in this report. So to share that good news with you, I would like to introduce Dr. Jason Sears, our director
Good evening, board members. Dr. Haas, Mr. Holden. Again, my name's Jason Sears, director of talent. I'd like to start, oh, it's already there. I'd like to start by highlighting some of the successes our team is most proud of. Through a concerted effort of our hiring managers, our school leaders, and especially our recruitment team, 25% of our new teacher hires were teachers of color. With the licensure knowledge of Michael Thomas, with the support of school staff like Mrs. Early and principals like Mr. Bonham at Albemarle High School, Mrs. Johnson at Journey Middle, and Dr. Blunt at Burley Middle School, we launched the initial class of our TOPS program. Then, as interest grew, so did the TOPS program. Now with the support of many other principals, we have TOPS teachers across the division. Through the diligence of Dr. Sarah Lynn, Albemarle was one of only 10 school divisions in the Commonwealth of Virginia to secure a $200,000 apprenticeship grant that will, among other things, support the professional development of two veteran special education teachers and fund, fund the professional and academic development of two former teaching assistants that will become special education teachers. Our talent team has secured, or is in the process of securing, innovative tools that will ensure our provisionally licensed teachers meet their requirements, and new teachers have the mentorship that will secure their success. Our recruitment team includes Brandon Edwards and John McCollquinn, as, as well as Jason Crutchfield, and they have used TalentEd and specifically our handshake software to deliberately and intentionally identify and recruit potential candidates in both classified and licensed positions, as well as making their application process as quick and efficient as possible. Finally, Eva McGee, our district substitute coordinator, has significantly increased the number of registered substitute teachers, as well as increased our substitute fill Data from the Virginia Department of Education Teacher and School Staffing Vacancy Dashboard demonstrates that among our comparable districts, Albemarle County not only achieved favorable results, am I too close? Not only received favorable results in 2022, but we are continuing that trend and, and in a unfavorable labor market. Now, we recognize that 0% vacancy is and should always be our ultimate goal, but the diligent work of our HR team, school leaders across the district, have netted us an impressive 1.3% vacancy rate. In comparison, a recent J-LARK study, Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee study for the Virginia Legislature noted the average vacancy rate among districts across Virginia is 4.8%. As you may recall, last year, we struggled filling all of our special education teaching positions, some of them remaining vacant for the entire year. We are excited to announce we are fully staffed in our special education classrooms. This represents a significant level of support in reducing caseloads, increasing opportunities for collaboration, potentially reducing classroom management and compliance issues, and increasing total student support. All of these things help to ensure our special education students receive effective instruction. We are very proud. The number of teachers we hired is up slightly to 215 new teachers this year. What we believe is in a very impressive 27% of our 215 newly hired teachers are teachers of color. The number of first-year teachers increased by 79, excuse me, increased to 79 this year. We note that nearly half of our new hires were in their first three years of teaching. Our newly hired staff remain highly qualified and well-educated, with over 60% of them holding at least a master's degree. This data informs us that our newly hired teachers are trending slightly more novice with more bachelor's degrees. As a result, we are working with the Department of Instruction, the Special Education Department, and the professional, and professional, excuse me, Professional Development Department, and our university partners to have a laser focus on teacher training, mentoring, and check-ins to ensure the success of our new teaching staff. As we take a closer look at our new hire diversity, we can see that over the last five years, we are succeeding in increasing our teachers of color and continuing to work toward making our teaching staff a true reflection of our community. As diversifying our workforce remains a focal point, we will continue to build relationships within the community, be more present on college campuses, and work with our school leaders as they continue to identify and, excuse me, identify highly qualified diverse We continue the trend of increasing diversity in our teaching force. 13.37 of our teaching staff were teachers of color, which represented a 3.3% increase since the 2017-18 school year. The annual change increased from under 1% over the past four years to over 2% this year. While we are pleased at this continued forward progress, we acknowledge racial diversity is only one aspect of diversity. In the upcoming years, we will be establishing affinity groups and other structures to work toward increased staff retention. Human Resources has partnered with classified hiring managers to lead the way in hiring diverse candidates. As you see, we have hired 55 transportation employees, 17 of which included full-time lead or part-time drivers. Of the vacant positions, we still seek to hire six home, excuse me, school-to-home drivers to fill all student transportation requests. These vacancies also include other staff, including office staff, mechanics, and, and many other positions within the department. This chart shows the status of hiring for other support departments as well. We will continue to collaborate to fill all vacancies. Some of our efforts will include social media campaigns, specialized job fairs, and working with our university partners to staff our classified positions. On this slide, you will see our commitment to diversity is also seen in our leadership team. This slide represents a mix of external hires as well as internal transfers and promotions. Over 50% of our external hires were employees of color. We, we believe, just as our teaching staff should mirror our school community, so should our leadership team. This year, we hired a larger than, a larger number of provisionally licensed teachers than ACPS typically hires. Within this group are a number of veteran paraprofessionals in ACP, A-C-P-S, who have made commitment to complete their coursework that leads to licensure, as well as start working as a classroom teacher. They meet all the minimum thresholds to teach while pursuing, pursuing their full credential. 66 teachers, which represent 31% of our new hires, were provisionally licensed. Due to decreases in enrollment in traditional teacher preparation programs, the trend to hiring provisionally licensed teachers will likely increase over the next several years. This means that teacher preparation, training, and support will shift from traditional collegiate teacher preparation programs to school districts through provisional licensure. Many of the provisionally licensed teachers we hired this year came from our existing workforce, such as substitute teachers, teaching assistants, safety, school safety monitors, and other positions within the district. This gives us the opportunity to introduce teachers that are significantly more representative to our student body because these candidates come from our community. We are collaborating closely with instructional coaches, Professional Development Department, and Special Education Department to ensure we closely monitor these teachers' progress and ensure they are trained to meet the high standards of all ACPS instructional staff. Finally, we plan to continue on the successful path we have undertaken over the last, excuse me, over the last five years. We will continue to target our recruitment efforts for all of our schools and departments to ensure effective and efficient use of all of our resources. We now have the ability to build significant on-campus presence at some of our closest university partners, which will build an even greater opportunity for relationships with current and future candidates. We will continue the innovative and transformative programmatic work to further define and refine our TOPS program, the apprenticeship, the apprenticeship program, and communication with our future educators in our high schools, in our high school career clusters. The use of boutique job fairs that target employment groups in the locations, times, and ways that yield the most and best candidates will continue to grow. Our use of power, of the powerful handshake software will allow us to connect directly with candidates across the country and in an intentional and deliberate manner. And finally, we will develop robust employee retention plan that will reach across all staff members, that will help reduce turnover and, and increase employee engagement. Before I turn it back over to Dan, I would like to acknowledge the Human Resources team that, that hung in there with us this afternoon, and thank them personally for the amazing work that they did today.
So as we wrap up, I just want to point out that some of the data, those numbers are changing constantly. The data was pulled about two weeks ago. We continue to make progress. There are still vacancies in our school division, and we are still working to fill every single vacancy. We are, we are not satisfied. The work is not done. We are pleased with progress, however, and we want to point that out. Like Jason, I want to express gratitude to our HR team and to hiring officials in the school division who make this a smooth process, and really, this is everyone's success. With that, we will open it up for any questions you may have.
I have a question about the...
I have a question about the bed staffing at the 100%. That's great. Can you tell me about what percentage are provisionally licensed in that department?
Within special education for our new hires, so 25 of those, that's not of, that's not of all the special ed we hired, though. That's of the, no, that is the special ed teachers we hired. Wait a minute. Sorry, I got, just mixed myself up. We don't have the direct numbers right now. I can get that for you.
Just roughly, I was, and the follow-up question to that was going to be, how are we making sure that we support them?
So we're in collaboration with the Special Education Department, with instructional coaches. For a number of our provisionally licensed teachers, they're currently in classes at UVA. I want to shout out two of our principals, Derabana at Albemarle and Ashby Johnson at Journey, who built schedules where their special ed teachers who are on a provisional license have common planning time, and the department chair is also in a planning period at the same time, which provides for robust mentoring and a lot of support. That, that ease of just-in-time answers to questions. Special ed coordinators are also providing really critical support.
I have a comment, short. I just wanted to say thank you so much. It's a wonderful presentation, and I really liked how you infused throughout the presentation data about our diversity hires. I know that's been something that's been a consistent ask, and I feel like you guys were very upfront during this presentation, and so just thank you. Thank you for doing that. Not that you weren't upfront before, but it was just nice the way that.
I, I'd just like to echo that. I mean, this has been a great first year, and the, the success, I, I hope it continues. I'm sure it will. I would like to ask, and, and Dr. Sears, I'd like to ask you, what do you see as being the, the, the key to hiring more employees of color? I mean, is it a, let's, let's talk teachers. Is it an outreach, a further outreach? Is the firm handshake a really good package?
Well, yeah, I think there are multiple reasons and, and ways for us to continue. I think outreach is, is definitely one. Building relationships with all of our partners, having the opportunity to be on campuses, whether they are historically black colleges and universities, starting those type of, of opportunities. I think we really had a great opportunity to, to reach into our, our current staff that, our classified staff is, is significantly more diverse than our teaching staff, and those individuals that are interested and, and ready and willing to come onboard as teachers, being able to identify them and put the supports in, in place to, to bring them onboard as well. Handshake is, is, is a, is a pretty cool tool that allows us to, to really give opportu, one of the things that we're going to be trying to do is build our recognition among all universities. We're working on presentations to have folks learn about what we're doing here, our desire to have our teaching force look like and, and mirror our community. So I, I believe when people find that out and have the opportunities to, to speak with our teachers and, and folks that love it here, that we'll begin to, to see that change. And again, I, I think the last thing, I don't want to go too far over, but, you know, having, you know, it's, when you have a number of diverse candidates, diverse candidates feel more comfortable coming here. You know, I can speak from, from experience when, and I think Lalani's group talked about that, when you are the only individual of color in a, in a building, you're isolated in that respect, not in all respects, but, you know, in, in some respects, you are. So when we have, you know, seven, eight, nine teachers in a, in a building, when we have the opportunity to bring candidates in and they can see themselves in the teaching force, then they begin to understand, okay, I, I do, I, I think I will be comfortable here, because a lot of that is comfort. So I wish I could put it on one thing, but I think there are a lot of things in, in the staff. We, we're really trying to, to, to get as many as we can.
I just got to say, Kate and I were at the Special Education Advisory Committee meeting on Tuesday night, and when it was announced that there were zero vacancies in special education teachers, I can't tell you the feeling in the room from both the parents as well as the number of teachers there, how appreciative they were because they know how hard it is to find teachers for those positions. And so, a huge thank you for everything, for this, you know, 1.3 vacancy rate, but particularly for that, it means a huge deal for those kids and those families to know that they have a consistent teacher this year.
Thanks.
I don't know if it's Jason or Dan, with, with respect to the, the provisionally, I'm glad that we are supporting our provisionally licensed teachers, but what does that time horizon look like for them to get fully certified?
It's a great question. The provisional license per Virginia Department of Ed is a three-year license, and they must complete all the requirements for licensure within those three years. So that includes passing the praxis, any general methods courses, and any specific content courses. The number of courses varies by the subject that they'll be teaching, but it is a three-year limit with, I think there's some exceptions for extensions, but they do not like to provide extensions.
And HR keeps track of their progress in their annual reviews and, and helps them along.
Yes. Yep. Absolutely.
I had one question. Dr. Sears, you mentioned that it looks like the provisional license hiring is going to be something that is going to be on the rise likely. Are we doing anything structurally to account for that, to welcome that trend in, to make sure that the, you know, we're still supporting the provisionally licensed teachers throughout the years?
Yeah, absolutely. We are, you know, one of the things that we're trying to do is make sure that what's happened, well, one of the things that we're trying to do is make sure that our provisionally licensed teachers have a very clear picture of everything they need. So we're kind of handing them kind of a roadmap, and we're going to be doing some checking in to make sure that they're, they're hitting their, their goals and things of that nature. But we are, we are, like I said before, we are working very closely with the Department of Instruction, Professional Development, and Special Education to really make sure. And it's been, it's been great to work together, working with those professionals, seeing the programs and processes they already had in place, and then working for us to, to make sure that we can reach those, reach those candidate, provisionally licensed teachers and build, and continue to build those programs as well.
And I think, if I may, part of the, the ask for these structures is going to be funding. We would like to be in a place where any classified staff member who has a bachelor's degree can come forward and say, I want to become a teacher. I'm a TA currently. I'm an office associate currently. I want to become a teacher. And then we can map out for them, looking at their transcripts, what does that look like for you? What's the coursework progression to get you licensure in the area you want to be in? That does require funding to pay for the courses, but we, we want to get there.
I, I would just want to note a couple of things. As Jono pointed out, this is the HR department's first full year as a department for the school system. This is, it's, it's two years since we started making the shift, so I know, and a lot of that time, they weren't fully staffed, and they've been able to do really impressive work. I mean, to be able to outpace Virginia in terms of the vacancy rate during an extremely challenging time. And so I think their work speaks for itself. I also think that Dan has been particularly visionary in getting traction with initiatives from the state level. It is true that the Virginia Department of Education, over the last year, has not lowered the bar in terms of teacher certification, but they have removed a lot of red tape, and the timelines have changed so that, so that if someone is seeking a provisional license, they still need to do the same things that they used to do, but the, the red tape, the lack of staffing at the state level, they've really worked on getting that straightened out so that the person can stick with us and be encouraged and keep moving. This, this will be a trend, but for my part, I see this as a very positive trend. Education reformers have talked for decades about shifting the old system of people getting their four-year degree, getting their license all in a bubble at the university level, and then being pushed out into classrooms with very little experience. They've talked about shifting it to models used in other countries where teachers, they have some training, they begin to get their feet wet in the classroom, like our paraprofessionals do, and then they, they decide, hey, I want to, I want to be in a different role. I want to move up to be a teacher. So really, they've been acting as an intern, and then they move into an apprenticeship. Their compensation increases so that they have that sustainable wage, and they get all that support that goes with it. So the one takeaway I had, Jason, was that we've got to keep working with our professional development staff, our HR staff, because we have to build a whole new infrastructure to accommodate the provisional licensure. But I think it's going to be well worth it, because the other solution is, we do know that in terms of instruction and evidence-based reading teaching is very lacking from our four-year universities. And since we're bringing people in at the ground floor, we can do that training and not have to reverse what's not been accomplished at the state level. So thank you for letting me say a few words. I'm really proud of the work y'all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a 10-minute break, and I see it's about 8:57, I'm going to say, so we'll be back at 9:07. be back at 9:07.
Let's do our business.
Next up, we have Family Life Education Review and Updates with Katina Dudley.
Can I just close this?
Um.
I don't know if this mouse is working. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Sorry. Now that you got up here.
Sorry about that, Kostina. Good evening, School Board. My name is Katina Dudley. I am a lead coach for Science, Health, and Family Life. I'm here tonight to present to you updates and new recommendations regarding the Family Life education curriculum. Every seven years, we're required to put together a community involvement team that will review our curriculum and our materials, and we're also annually asked to take feedback from our stakeholders and make adjustments based on feedback. The Family Life education curriculum in Albemarle County Public Schools is approved by our local school board. We teach standards that have been locally developed but are aligned to the Virginia State standards. Any changes that are made to the curriculum must be approved by the school board. You might remember that I stood here a year ago to make recommendations for the upcoming school year. So during the 21-22 school year, we engaged in conversations with that community involvement team, and in the fall of 2022, we presented recommendations from this team and implemented the approved changes during the 22-23 school year. During that school year, we received lots of feedback from our stakeholders, and so tonight, we are coming to you to provide updates but to make additional recommendations based on the feedback that has been received. Linked here are documents for the opt-out forms. Last year, in the elementary school and at the elementary level in grades four and five, we recommended that the opt-out options be a choice for families, that students could engage in the Family Life curriculum, either in a gender-separated or a gender-combin'd class. When we sent those opt-out forms home, if people didn't opt out, if people did not opt out, principals didn't know which class to put the students in. So there's some changes and recommendations on the recommendation form at the elementary level. But we also made some changes to all three forms to include additional information for families to access the Family Life curriculum and for families to have contact information for the Family Life educator. And so you'll see those changes on those forms. So as we changed how Family Life was taught, we received lots of feedback throughout the year. A team of teachers came together this summer, and so I am presenting these recommendations on their behalf. At the elementary level, we are really just recommending that we change the reproductive diagrams, and so you'll see the updated versions of those diagrams linked here. And then, if those are approved, we'll replace the old diagrams. At the secondary level, all of our classes went to gender-combin'd classes. So every student that was participating in the Family Life education participated in gender-combin'd classes. Secondary educators are recommending updates to the Family Life lessons to accommodate these learning environments. In grade six, they combined the two reproductive systems, but the changes that you see in these particular slide decks are noted in the notes section so that you could see that the male reproductive slides had some additional structures added so that it would complement what was added in the female reproductive slides. In grade eight, the teachers recommended updates to the slides to include updated data, and this updated data is in regards to pregnancy prevention and disease control. And so, again, where you see those changes are noted in the notes section of the slide deck, so you can see exactly what information was changed. I believe in that slide as well, we actually removed an image this year as well. So I noted that in the notes as well. Our high school teachers came together. Conversations significantly decreased at the high school level when the students were combined, and so they actually made some adjustments to a couple of the slide decks. This particular request is for new videos to be reviewed, to be recommended. There are several videos, but only one of them is lengthy, so they're very short, and they are pretty concise to the standards that are to be taught. But they would like to replace our old videos with new videos that are aligned to the standards. And then the last slide deck recommendation is on sexually transmitted infections. So, again, all of the data that you see changed in these are updated to be more current. They also increased information about current facts on particular STIs that are to be taught in the class. And then you'll see a section of slides here. They're kind of like, did you know type slides, so that students would hopefully, in a small group environment, be able to have conversations about the topic without feeling like they needed to put themselves out there in front of the entire class. So some of these recommendations that you see in the notes are to update information, but the other information is to, the other changes are to increase student engagement in the classroom. The recommendations that have been presented to you tonight are aligned to our locally-developed standards. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to provide you with that information. I do thank you for your time and for your consideration to these recommendations.
I guess one thing that'd be helpful would be links to maybe what the old stuff was, so that we can compare and see the changes, because I don't know what...
So I'm happy to put that in there. Some people felt like that was confusing because the, they weren't, they're not identical side-by-side slides, so that's why any changes were made in the notes. But we have all of that, and it's public for you now, and I'm happy to put this slides linked in for you to make that easier.
And it doesn't have to be in the presentation, if you don't want, if you could just, if you could send it so we can compare. That would be helpful. And then also, I guess, I just, I guess, I'm curious about what level of this is being dictated by code section and legislation. I mean, you know, like, if you look at the teen pregnancy one, you know, going through that slides, I've got some concerns, you know, it, but I know that y'all do a process for this, so I guess I'm just curious, the conversations and how they went, and what is like being, what that looks like and what we have to say. So, for example, my issue with the teen pregnancy one is, you know, there's one slide for contraception, and it's, three of the bullet points are about abstinence, and then one slide saying there could be other methods, and it doesn't list them, tell them, or give any information on them. And then it's got some stats around teen pregnancy, which is fine, but then some of the ones, which I'm assuming are supposed to be convincing or persuasive, are a little bit odd, like limited paternity leave. It's not really something that's going to affect high school males when they have a baby, but, you know, I don't know. I'm just curious, because I don't think this was all from RP. I'm just curious what it was and what were required and why it might be so limited.
I have similar concerns regarding the birth control methods, and, you know, if it's that there's, there's code or law that we're supposed to be highlighting abstinence, but I don't think that's the only thing we should be highlighting in today's world.
I can actually pull the statement for that for you guys, so that you know what the Virginia state's statement is around that particular guideline, and then we'd be happy to take your feedback from that statement and make adjustments to that slide deck. I think teachers have lots of similar feelings, so not wanting to necessarily speak, but yes, I will take that, and I'll share that statement with you guys, because that's easy to access from the state standards.
I gotta be honest here. I mean, this is, that's terrible. What is this statement? This is like feeling like it's going backwards. I feel like I've read articles when I was a high school student that was like how abstinence-only sex education actually increases pregnancy rates. So I am just flab, a little bit flabbergasted. I mean, I get that we're doing our job, but we're literally telling high school students who are, sorry, some of them are going to have sex, that abstinence is the only method, and we provide them no information for if they're not abstinent. That seems like bad public policy.
That might be something you need to handle at the state level.
I don't know, but I'm thinking.
I will provide you with that information.
Katina, I know you convened with stakeholders and the teachers got together, but what kind of feedback do you get from the high school-level students? I mean, I'm not concerned about the middle, elementary, that they would give a lot of feedback, but... What do high school students think of the level of material? Do we do any formal evaluation?
I don't have any formal evaluation. We had a team meeting today with all of our health and PE leaders, and we even had some of our teachers that are former high school students, and they were just talking about the limited amount of change that's happened even since they were in high school with this, these standards and this curriculum. I think the biggest thing that the high school teachers really kind of want to address is really, how do we engage these students in these conversations on these topics and let them know that there are resources available to them? If you note, in all of our standards locally, every unit ends with a standard that talks about making sure students know that there are local resources and local agencies that are available to them. And so that is one of the things that they, I think, tried to also include in that particular slide deck as well.
Thank you, Katina.
So I look forward to getting the statement to figure out where we align on all of those things. Is there, so we're taking this for information, and then would we need to do action on it next time?
Yes. I think, too, one thing that you can note on the opt-out form, just to help you guys with, when you think about the clarity around this, when local school boards determine what the standards are that are to be taught, on our opt-out form, what the state requires is taught in all schools is listed there. And so you'll see that those are things that we have to include in our Family Life education when it's taught locally. And then the state document, it's going to be easy to find what your request is, because the state document starts with that statement. So.
What percentage of our, of our students opted out? I mean, I'm sure it probably varied by level, but maybe not.
It did. You know, we actually have the numbers, and I should have put a slide on that and put the numbers in that, because we ask the teachers to report. We have to give an opt-out form at the very start of the school year, and then we have to give a second opt-out form two weeks prior to the instruction of Family Life education. It not only varied by level, but it also varied by school communities as well. And so we have those numbers. I'm happy to just share that with you. I think one of the things that came up in conversation today was just making sure that the language on our opt-out form is friendly for our elementary families, because when you state what we have to teach at the local level, some families think that's all taught in fourth and fifth grade, but that's the progression from fourth through 10th grade. And it was even recommended today that we clarify that even on our opt-out form. We wouldn't be changing any language, but we would be clarifying what's taught at elementary, middle, and high school, so that families don't think they're going to get all of this in fourth and fifth grade. And to be honest with you, we're talking about two to five days of what's been, of a lesson, right? And so even, we're talking about five hours of instruction annually that we present to you with the feedback. We get a lot of feedback about that, five hours of instruction.
Very important.
Which, this is a really important, I personally feel like this is really important. I really want our teachers to feel comfortable, because I think that sometimes this is where these students are able to have these conversations. So that's one of the things we're working with the teachers, is to really think about what the engagement looks like through these particular lessons that can be difficult in front of a classroom of students.
And are these forms in Spanish, or what do we do with our ESOL students?
We do post them in Spanish as well. And everything is now posted on our website, so when things go on the website, families can get any of our documents translated, even our slide decks, in any language.
This is extremely granular about, since you were talking about the opt-out forms, wouldn't each grade level have its own?
Yes. So, yes, we have, if you went to the website, you would see one even K through 10. We just don't have a lot that we change with the K through three. It's really the fourth grade where things start to, when we start to get a lot of feedback from our families. But yes, there is a form. So the elementary form would, both fourth and fifth, would have the same changes that you see on the sample there, and then the middle school, sixth through eighth. Those forms would all be consistent, and same with the two high school forms. But yes, there's one per grade level. What's different about the forms at each grade level is we list the standards that are taught, because families have the opportunity to opt out of some standards and not all standards.
Thank you, Katina. I know, I'm just, behind the scenes, I know all the work that you all put into this. And what I would suggest, you know, given the boards thinking about that, the particular lessons, is when you email the board that information, if you can include Helen, because that could just be something they talk about in terms of legislation priorities going into this season.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Recognizing that you have, you cannot control that.
I understand that. It's no problem. All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Katina.
Next, we have Virginia Literacy Act Resource Selection Process. Johnra Hayes.
Good evening, Dr. Haas and board members. I am going to actually turn this over to Ms. Michelle Kastner and Ms. Karen Heathcock to share this presentation as part of the steering committee.
Good evening, board members. How are you this evening? Thank you for this opportunity. We're actually super excited to share this tonight. We're excited about our literacy adoption process. I'll start with saying that, as you know, in 2022, the General Assembly passed the Virginia Literacy Act. I'll start with saying that, as you know, in 2022, the General Assembly passed the Virginia Literacy Act, which is to improve early literacy outcomes for all Virginia young learners. And beginning next year, every student in grades K through three will receive core literacy instruction based in the science of reading. So Karen is going to go over our current state.
Currently, the guaranteed viable curriculum in reading K-5 is being a reader. When the Virginia Literacy Act came out requiring that next year, all core reading programs in K-3 are evidence-based literacy instruction, being a reader was not a program that was approved as a VDOE-approved program. It scored well in developing comprehension and background knowledge, small group instruction, writing, and independent practice. Where it didn't meet expectations was around phonological awareness, phonemic awareness and phonics. So to shore up phonics instruction this year, every K-3 classroom teacher received a UFLI foundations program, which is an explicit and systematic phonics program that follows established scopes and sequence. So that's being implemented in addition to BAR in classrooms across the county to shore up the phonics piece that BAR didn't meet.
Okay, so our purpose for the adoption is we are totally committed to having transparent process for parents, community members, staff and school board and the school board. And we're also committed to being inclusive. We want to work to hear all voices and that would include all, every elementary teacher in our county and also parents. We have figured out a way to do that and we're going to be super thoughtful, thinking about our learners for today and also with our goal to catch everyone up. And we're going to provide a clear process with attention to the details. I just wanted to, you know, share with all of you, the members of our steering committee. If you'll notice, we have representation from many departments in our division. And basically, our goal as a steering committee is to help guide the process. So in terms of the larger committee, we will have five building-level administrators. We're going to have actually three teachers from every elementary school. We're going to have a K through five teacher. We're going to have an ESOL or SED teacher and we're also going to have a reading specialist from every school. And we also will have at least five community partners as part of the larger committee.
Okay. So the Adoption Steering Committee has met several times, really to just lay out the logistics of what the timeline will be and how the process will flow. And we have our first meeting as a big group, 65 or so people, coming together on Wednesday next week to look at the six programs that have already been vetted and reviewed by the state and approved by the state. So those are the six that we're going to be looking at. On Wednesday next week, we will be splitting into study teams and each study team will be assigned a different program to review. We're using a rubric that is aligned with the rubric the state developed. And each of the study teams will go away and have until the October 25th meeting to take a deep dive into that program, using the rubric, coming back with pros and cons to share with the larger group and answer questions, kind of give, give the feedback on the program that they took a deep dive into. And at that 10:25, the end of October meeting, we want to try to be able to narrow it down to the two choices that the larger committee agrees to. As soon as those choices are made, we want to get each of these kits into every single school and to Center One so that teachers and families have an opportunity to come in and view it through the month of November. We are going to have QR codes that lead to rating scales for teachers and families to give feedback and to ask questions. When we come back together on the 11/29, November 29th, we will have all of the feedback from the schools and families. And we are going to have the two publishers come present and then answer questions that may have come to the fore through the feedback process. Once that happens, then our goal is to have a recommendation to send to the board on January. Ultimately, we want to make sure these kits are in the hands of teachers and that there's a comprehensive PD plan in place before the end of this year so that people can come back confident that they, they know how next year will look.
Right. I was going to add that our goal is actually to be forward-thinking when it comes to PD, that we want to be able to provide the PD well before the end of the school year so that teachers will have multiple opportunities to actually dig deep with the new program so that it's not that we're getting training in August and then a week later, kids walk into the building. So we're going to be super thoughtful about that. And then I think the next one just shows the six approved programs that the state has put out. And we're in the process of getting all the kits right now being delivered to us in Almar County. So I just want to open it up for any questions.
I know, Michelle, you talked about what we're going to do in this intervening year to buttress the, be a reader. But how does this, I mean, and assuming, you know, next year we'll have one of these programs. What do we do about the kids, say, in fifth grade that have not had these programs? I don't even know what I'm asking. Is there going to be continued support for them to get them up to speed?
Absolutely, yeah. So we have a tiered support, yes. We have a tiered support system. Currently, under that system, we use something called SIPs, which is explicit instruction in phonics and phonemic awareness. So I think that, I'm not worried about that. I think that right now, if you were to walk in any elementary school, principals have already come to us saying this is what we need in terms of extra SIP materials, whatever it is that we need, especially for at-risk schools, we have already provided those materials for them. So I'm confident that our reading achievement data will increase this year. I'm confident in our principals that we have in all of our schools and our teachers. And Karen is new to the role. She's a literacy expert herself and she's already been in all 15 schools and she works closely with the literacy specialists, so we have a constant communication, constant communication from schools basically letting us know what they need. And then we're also going into classrooms and modeling, Karen, you were in classrooms today, right? Just kind of observing firsthand how the instruction is going. And it went super positive today. So I think the key getting through this year is keeping lines of communication open and that us and center office are remaining super responsive to the needs of our schools and our students. And that's what we're striving to do. And I know that Patrick's department is actually working on the same work. We're all trying to wrap around all of our schools just to get students what they need and teachers.
Who are, who are the community members of your working group? I mean, not individually necessarily, but just, are they parents or the educators at UVA?
Yes, so we have a combination. We have parents. We've reached out to, to see if we can get someone from UVA to want to join us in on this work. And then we have community members that don't have students in the school but are interested in the literacy work. So it's a combination. And we didn't want to just say parents, we want to say families.
Huge thank you for putting the specialized English learning teachers at the same level because I think that's really important. The one, I know it makes it difficult because they're on an hourly rate, but because so many literacy groups are led by teaching assistants, I don't know if at this point it would be possible to put any teaching assistants on that team. Because I think looking at those curricula with an eye to how they're being implemented, kind of put from a teacher lens, but also from a, from an assistant lens, or at least as people are doing a review, kind of having that in mind.
Okay.
And teaching assistants are certainly going to be in the schools with the programs for the month of November. And I would open up feedback for anyone who's actually.
It's a good idea.
Has that role at school.
Yeah, so during the month of November 1st to about December 15th, we're going to coordinate so that every teacher, and we can include teaching assistants, that they have the opportunity to look through all the materials and go through the rating.
Yeah, so in a way, and with that, just knowing they're hourly, making sure that they.
Yeah, right. Absolutely.
And then the other thing I was thinking about is, is you, I mean, obviously as you go through this, there's the budget and we, one of the things we did, a number of us were at a reading event last Friday and they were, and the Dr. Coons was, you were there, right? And she was talking about, you know, it's about the materials, but then it's about the training, which you've talked about, but then it's also about scheduling and time and calendaring. And so I think more information as we go forward about kind of how you're going to partner with Maya and Rosalyn and kind of on the budget side of this. So in addition to the, or you guys are already there, in addition to the cost of the materials, but how are we going to talk about the cost of training and then time needed to really do this work? What's the total cop, total cost of ownership as we go into the next budget season?
Right. And Dr. Hayes has already set up a meeting with Rosalyn to discuss procurement, so I think we're on top of it and we're happy to come and give updates.
That'd be great. I think that's, this is something we should kind of continue to partner on.
Any other questions?
I just want to concur with Dr. Berlin around the teaching assistance. That's feedback we get is that they want to be on the ground floor of making decisions and also the PD, I think that, and we all know the critical role. To Dr. Acuff, this, and Pat will talk about this briefly, but for students who, the, the reading results in Virginia across the board were poor and sat still. The new state superintendent coming in announced a program called All Hands Virginia. And part of that is high-intensity academic tutoring. And so every school division in Virginia is going to be required to provide high-intensity academic tutoring for students that either failed their SOL tests in reading and math, reading or math, or scored below a threshold of passing that identified them as at risk of failure. So, and that's, it's not, you're going to do it next year. It's not, you're going to do it in January. It's, you're going to start doing it in October. So while it's going to be a heavy lift for us because we've got to find tutors, we've got to figure out our school schedules, may mean restructuring some things in terms of the Elementary School Day, just to get this fit in. But I also, I support it because what it does is it mandates something that people kind of nibble around the edges to try to accomplish. And she just basically said, we got to catch up. So here's the resources, there's funding behind it. And I'm glad you asked that question because it leads into this mandate that we, that we need to deliver for our students and for our community with the goal of catching them up.
No, I was just going to say, what, I don't think I have the bandwidth to look at all these six programs, but once it's narrowed down to two, I would love to, for you to just brief us on, on the two and why those two, and then I could dig in a little bit more.
Okay. We'll be happy to do that. Thank you.
I don't have so much a question as a comment. I appreciate, I appreciate you guys sharing this because I remember us, it was ill-timed, but discussing being a reader December 2019, and I was checking the minutes and the only other time we looked, really discussed it was in January 2020, right before the pandemic. And I certainly didn't have as much of an understanding about how we had done the selection process or any of those things, so I really appreciate all of this getting shared with us, having really rigorous process for input. And I really appreciate you mentioning making sure and already thinking about how we implement it with fidelity because that's something we heard, you know, years after we put, you know, well, the pandemic happened in the interim, but two years after we put being a reader into place, so I'm glad that we've learned from that and thank you.
So, and I, to your point, I just want to say that years and years ago, being a reader started in our school system and there was no formal selection process. It started out at a couple of our schools. I think it started out at Stone Robinson as a choice. We didn't have a program across the school system. And, and again, this was many years ago. And so based on some principals using it with their staff and the staff enjoying using it, it started to spread around the school system. Because they, they had really enjoyed the program called Being a Writer before that. So there are so many lessons learned about, you know, how you do this work. And again, I, the thing I appreciate about the Virginia Literacy Act is they're saying, basically from the VDOE down, we're saying, these are all vetted programs that if they're implemented with fidelity, you're going to get the results that the state expects. Instead of, in the past, basically saying, we expect results, here's the standards, now you figure it out. And so for us, as a school system that has really wrestled with implementation over the years, this is, this is a blessing for us to be able to have this kind of direction from the VDOE. And it's common in other states and has been for a long time, but Virginia, I've often said is a, is a place, it's a museum of education. Like, how did they do it in the past? Go to Virginia and find out. So this is a step in the right direction. There's going to be uniformity in the state. And I really want to just say how appreciative I am of Dr. Hayes, Karen, Michelle, for their outreach efforts that they're going to engage in to make sure we do it right this time.
Matt, back to your comment that there's money attached to the intensive tutoring. Would that also apply for intensive tutoring, like in next summer school?
So, you want to talk about the money? Well, let me, broadly, broadly, so I, I'm going to send you all the playbook tomorrow and I'm sending it to all employees in the weekly check-in. So basically, there's, what the, what the VDOE is saying for particular students is a requirement of a number of hours that they need to do tutoring per week. And then they provide different options, right? So it could be before school, after school. I would prefer during school, trying to figure out how to use some of our intervention periods and times when they're in the response to intervention work. There's also a provision that they can do it on the weekends. But summer is also a time and you can take funding that comes with it to use it during the summertime to fund the high-intensity tutoring. We're also, you know, not that we want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but we do have a summer school debrief meeting coming up next week. And one of the things I'm interested in doing is expanding our summer school because right now it's just essentially, what is it, 19 days? I'd like, I'd like to see it be two weeks longer. And we've had a lot of positive feedback about our summer school program this last year and the changes we made to it. So you'll be getting an update on summer school either the next board meeting or the first one in October. And I'm going to make a pitch to say we should do another couple of weeks of it and we can use some of this funding to defray that. Did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I was just going to quickly comment on the, the state budget, as you know, finally was adopted. We don't have the specifics. We just can sense what's from the headlines. The spreadsheets will be released soon, but it's our understanding that there is a pot of one-time money that is supposed to be devoted towards learning recovery and can be spent over more than just this year, so it can go into the summer. So we're excited to see those details. And our plan is to present a budget update to the board in November.
And so you didn't have to correct me on anything.
Everything you said was accurate.
I have, I have a question just to make sure I heard everything. There are teachers from each school that's going to be involved in the selection process?
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then once the program has been chosen, there will be intensive training for our teachers on how to implement the program?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just want to make sure.
Yes, yes and yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have the assessment and accreditation update from Patrick McLaughlin.
This is usually Jackson Zimmerman's slot.
You know, you took the words right out of my mouth. I said, I finally get to see what it feels like to be Jackson Zimmerman up here. It's a good feeling, too. I get to keep, it's all in my hands right now. I get to keep everybody here. So, sorry, I think this is getting a little feedback on there. So, good evening, board members. It's a pleasure to be with you here tonight. My name is Pat McLaughlin. I am the Assistant Superintendent for Strategic Planning for the School Division. And tonight I'm here to provide you an update on our SOL achievement data for the 2223 school year. A primary reason that we share this data with the board each year is that our SOL results are really one of the key indicators we have of whether or not we're meeting our mission. Specifically, they tell us how well we are, how well we are moving toward ending the predictive value of race, class, gender and special capacities on our children's success through high-quality teaching and learning for all. As a reminder, before we get into the details tonight, there are two ways in which the VDOE compiles and reports achievement results in our schools. The first are what they term assessment results. The first are what they term assessment results. These results indicate the number of students who passed an SOL test by earning a 400 or more in our spring testing window. These data are provided at both the division level and at the individual school level. The second way in which the state reports school-level results are what we term accreditation results. These are results of SOL tests with adjustments for student growth, which can be achieved by showing improvement from a previous SOL test, even though a student did not pass that test. These results determine an individual school's accreditation and are reported only at the school level. So we'll begin tonight by looking at our assessment results. This chart shows our reading results, and the four bars that you see on the bar graph show our assessment results for the last two years compared to the state of Virginia. The light blue bar on the very left is our 21-22 county results, the lighter red bar is the 21-22 state results, the blue bars, the darker blue bars are results from last school year in ACPS, and the darker red bar is the results from the state of Virginia from the 22-23 school year. The state reports these results for all of our students combined, and then for seven distinct membership groups, Asian students, Black students, Hispanic students, students who are multiple races, students with disabilities, students who are economically disadvantaged, and students who are English learners. So in reading last year, our overall pass rate dropped by one percentage point from 21-22, and in our membership group categories, we improved in three and declined in four. Looking at our writing results, our overall results in writing rose by six percentage points, and our membership groups saw six groups increase and one group decline.
Patrick, I'm sorry for the interruption, but it's a clarifying question, and I'm sorry if it's just late, I'm not getting it, where would be some, you know, what's the bar for someone who doesn't identify as one of these groups?
So they would, they would be an all, so like, we have some groups that are too small, so if you had, say, an Asian Pacific Islander.
No, I mean, like, white.
That is not a membership group that gets, that's, that is accounted for in accreditation purposes, so we tend not to have that up there, I can add that in there.
Yeah, because I mean, so the all is the average of all these ones, so, you know, that piece, the majority of our students are white, so it'd be interesting to see how that is in comparison to the, all the breakout groups.
Yeah, typically, so, absolutely, we can add that back in, and I'll show you, and we can get that off, pull that off of the school quality profiles as well. So, back to our writing, we had a six percentage point increase in our overall results last year. Six membership groups increased from one year to the other, and one group declined. For our math trends, our overall results rose three percentage points, with five groups improving, one remaining flat, and one declining. In science, we saw an increase of five percentage points overall, and we saw increases in all seven of our membership groups. And finally, our history scores rose 6%, with six groups improving and one group staying flat. So in summary, in those five categories, each one has eight groups that are reported out, we saw improvement in 30 categories, we were flat in two categories, and we saw a decline in eight categories. One thing that I think is important to, to take a look at also, is where we are in comparison to the state, and outside of our overall categories, we continue to be below the state averages in most reporting categories that we just shared. In addition to the assessment results, the VDOE reports accreditation results for individual schools. School accreditation is based on six quality indicators for our elementary schools and middle schools, and those are achievement gap, those are academic achievement for all students in English, academic achievement for achievement gap groups in English, the same two breakouts for math, academic achievement for science is only looked at for, as a, for all of the students in the school, and chronic absenteeism. In our high schools, there are three additional categories for which they are judged for accreditation, our graduation and completion index, our dropout rate, and our college, career, and civic readiness index. To earn a rating of accredited, a school must have all of their school quality indicators at Level 1 or Level 2. Generally, that means a pass rate for Level 1 of 75% or higher in reading, 70% or higher in our other subjects. A Level 2 is 65 to 75 in reading, 65 to 70 in math and science, and below 65% would put you into Level 3. If schools have one or more indicators at Level 3, they receive a rating of accredited with conditions, but it's important to note also that the state awards what they call three-year accreditation waivers. So if a school meets all of the benchmarks at Level 1 or 2 for three consecutive years, for the next three years, they're granted accreditation regardless of where their results are, and we'll talk about why that, we'll see the impact of that on some of our schools in just a minute. So while official accreditation results have yet to be released, I believe the official date is the 18th of September, if they don't change it. I can share with you tonight what we believe we're going to see in those results based on a preview that we've gotten, that we've received from the state. So last year, out of our 24 schools, 20 were fully accredited, four were accredited with conditions, those are Greer, Mountain View, Red Hill, and Woodbrook. And of our schools that were accredited, we had eight schools that needed to use a three-year waiver to receive that accreditation, meaning they had at least one Level 3 category that was there. This year, we're anticipating that 21 schools will be accredited, and three will be accredited with conditions. Greer, Red Hill, and Woodbrook will continue to be our schools accredited with conditions, Mountain View improved enough that they moved up to an accredited school. This year also, we have some schools that are getting their accreditation through the three-year waiver, but that number's reduced to five from eight from last year. So to sum up our accreditation status and what we're anticipating from the state, we've seen an increase in accredited schools and a decrease in schools accredited via a three-year waiver. So in both our assessment and accreditation results, we have some bright spots, but our work is far from done as it relates to student achievement and our goal of ending the predictive value of race, class, gender, and special capacities on student success. I'd like to spend the final few minutes of the presentation providing a brief update and how we plan to address academic progress. So as you heard in the previous presentation, we've got a couple of things in the works. One is the Virginia Literacy Act, which will go into effect for all school districts in the 24-25 school year. We are accelerating some elements of this act to have them in place this year. This includes having at least one reading specialist and/or interventionist in each of our schools with up to six positions in our Title I schools. To support this work, we have 15 teachers enrolled in the VCU Reading Specialist Cohort to earn their Reading Specialist endorsement. Additionally, we are supplementing our reading program with dedicated phonics instruction using materials from UFLI, the University of Florida Literacy Institute. As Dr. Haas alluded to as well, and you're probably aware that Governor Youngkin's office recently announced All In Virginia Plan to address COVID-19 era learning loss by focusing resources on literacy, learning, and attendance. An element of this plan is the development and implementation of high-impact, high-intensity academic tutoring, and this week, we received an update from the VDOE on recommendations for implementing this program, and staff is currently working on developing that implementation. Additional areas of focus for improvement come from recommendations we received through the Bellwether audit. While you will receive a more comprehensive update for our work, in our work session in October, I'd like to share a few highlights of what we have moving forward so far this year. Each of the main bullets here is a direct recommendation from the Bellwether team. So this year, we're increasing the use of formative assessments. For the first time in my memory, we have assessments, division-created assessments, that all students will take in grades 3 through 8, and for our high school and, of course, SOL classes. These assessments will be given, different assessments each quarter for the first three quarters of the year. They're aligned to division curriculum maps and pacing guides to ensure coverage of the material prior to assessment. And I'd really like to point out the tremendous work that the Office of Instruction has done to make this happen. Prior to creating these common assessments, the team turned around the creation and revision of pacing guides with incredible efficiency and many hours of work over the course of this summer. Our division is in the best position I've ever seen it as it relates to pacing and assessment. The Department of Instruction is also in the process of adopting a new ELA curricula, as you heard just a moment ago, as well as looking at secondary math in our Algebra I curricula as recommended by Bellwether. Our Learning Walk tool has been redesigned through a partnership with the Office of Strategic Planning and the Office of Professional Learning, and the board will hear much more about the work that Jamie Gelner's doing around Theory of Change at the October work session, as well as the process of reimagining the instructional coaching model and the engagement supports we have in place for our families. Finally, as a division, we've also identified six schools that we're calling Accelerate Schools. These schools, we feel, face different challenges and need different supports than many of our other schools. We challenge the principals of these schools to consider what they currently need that they do not have, that would make the most difference in improving student outcomes. Each school worked with departments across the division to identify their areas of need, with most focusing on teacher professional development, the creation of new support positions, and the acquisition and implementation of progress monitoring tools. We'll be working closely with these schools as they work to accelerate progress for their students. So while there's much work still to be done, we have many puzzle pieces that are falling into place. And as we conclude tonight, I'd like to remind the board that detailed information about the School Division and our progress can be found on the Virginia School Quality Profile site. I thank the board for their time tonight, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Do you anticipate that we'll see a similar adoption process for secondary math and Algebra I? Where that's, I can't remember where that's at on the timeline.
So the, so, so Bellwether had a process looking at math that went out through about the summer of 2025.
Right.
For that. There were some kind of immediate pieces that Melissa Mitchum and our instructional team that works with math have in place, have started over the summer. That's primarily focused on our high school Algebra I courses, working with the teachers there, two needs that they've identified, they felt like they needed a, a better diagnostic tool, and so they're, they're developing something for that there, and then following the use of that diagnostic tool, having additional resources that are there. So while I don't have all the specific details of what those resources are, I know that that is, is in progress, and that team's working together right now with, and if you look at the Bellwether audit, it's got some step-by-steps through summer 2025 that includes things like summer bridge programs and, and additional supports at our middle schools.
Following on, we're thinking in math tonight, Rebecca, I mean, I'm, I'm delighted we're doing something about the reading, I really want to focus a lot more on the math and science as well. Does any of the intensive tutoring funding from the state permit us to focus on math?
It does, it focuses, it is designed both for reading and math, and so you'll, as Dr. Haas alluded to, based on students' performance on the SOL, students who, actually, I think they set a pretty high bar, up, all the way up to a score of around 450 for most kids, which is 50 points higher than passing, those students will be eligible for tutoring for reading and, and for math, based on their results.
But they're not, they're not, students are going to need more input before they get to freshman, or eighth grade, ninth grade, or freshman algebra, to be ready to do it, anyway. You know where I'm going.
Yeah.
This is a random comment, but I vaguely recall that at some point last year, we set target goals for what we wanted to see with the SOL data, and we laid it out, and I feel like I'd appreciate a slide or an update on where we hit the goals, where we didn't hit the goals, and kind of that slide, because it was like a table getting filled in, so that we can see, oh, we wanted to improve by two points here, we did it for our Hispanic students, we did not for, and then in an ideal world, which I won't be here, but I'd like to see that hopefully tied, you know, Bellwether talked about creating like a comprehensive kind of Theory of Change, and like tasking, like, so we can see what is being effective towards changing that, so I'd like to see that in the ideal, but just in the short term, I'd like to make sure that we're, or maybe not, maybe we don't care about the targets anymore.
I do, yeah, no, I mean, I, I think we should, I think it's important to, like, what did we say? Like, you set a target, you can't just say, it's over here, what it says, like, look at the data, we made it or we didn't, what are we doing, and then, I think, I think that's one of the things that, you know, Bellwether has talked about, is like, with those kind of targets, both for kind of dates by which, but also what we do, like, having an open transparent process, that every two months, every quarter, we kind of look at where we are on meeting the, not the score goals, but the benchmarks regarding what the tasks to be done.
Oh, yeah, like the Theory of Change.
The Theory of Change, and then I think also, then when, what does that mean for the scores, and how, what are we going to do as we're not, as we make it or aren't making it? I think it's important to.
I think to me, though, I mean, I think it's important to have that for all the things that Bellwether set out, when we were making those goals, I think it was, to me, it was a.
A shot in the dark?
Yeah, it was a shot in the, I just did it like, very mathematically, and, you know, I think for us, for me, Bellwether is a watershed moment, and so those things that I was thinking ahead of that, I didn't have a sense of what was wrong yet. I mean, you know, we did have a sense, but we didn't have as clear a sense, so I feel like, if we were to do that project again, maybe after having this Theory of Change, that might be a little bit more meaningful. I mean, I get what you're saying, definitely about like, hey, if we say something, we should stick with it, but I just didn't think that it was educated in, in the way I was doing it, others may be different, but that was how I felt about it.
Yeah, I think you're getting at what I was feeling, it's like, I do want to not drop off the fact that we set clear goals and said we'd have an update on here's the metrics, and did we hit them, but I, I have, do have that feeling of, well, you know.
How do we set those goals?
How do we set those goals? We basically just said, let's try for two points in every category.
I'd be happy to send that to the board.
Yeah, great.
Patrick, what happened at, at Mountain View?
You know, it, you know, it's, it's hard to pin anything on, on any one thing.
Right, right.
I think it's a combination of, of our teachers, of our leadership, of our community, you know, there, there's so much that goes into a school improving, and if it was, if we could simplify it and say, well, here's the one thing Mountain View did, well, then we do that everywhere, right? And so it's, you know, that, that a, a, the system model that a school has is affected by so many things, but I will say that, you know, I think about the, the leadership that Cindy brought to Mountain View, I think that, that we wouldn't have seen it without strong leadership at that school, we wouldn't have seen it without strong teachers who are dedicated to moving this work forward, but it's hard, other than speaking broadly about it, to, to be able to pin it to one thing.
Keep it up.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Last item on our agenda that I already put away, other business by board members and, and or superintendent.
I, just a super quick one, because I announced that I was resigning, but I didn't say the date, I, that would be a, and I don't want people to think like I'm resigning right now, effective October 15th, but I won't be at the next meeting, but I will be at the October 12th meeting.
That's all, thank you.
I was just going to say, and Rebecca already mentioned it, she and I were at the CAC meeting on Tuesday, and we had a huge turnout, Dr. Haas was there, Dr. Hayes was there, several other, Daphne Kaiser was there, and several other people, but what was most impressive is representatives from all of our 25 schools, it was, they said it was the biggest turnout they've ever had, so it was, I highly recommend going, I'm not as energetic as Rebecca, who says she goes to every one, but you need to go to at least one.
All right, barring any other business, we adjourned.
Thank you, guys.
Good job.